Let's call the regular meeting of City Council to order Monday, May 12, 2025 at 5:30 for a closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Potem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Okay, item three, we have an open session item is to consider possible action to appoint Deputy City Attorney Richard Chiriba as additional labor negotiator for the city. We all good with that, guys?
Yeah.
Make a motion?
We need a vote on it?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion on the floor for Pro Tem and second by Councilmember Coops?
Emeritus.
Call roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, that business taken care of, now we can have a closed session, so first we go to that. Public comments, Mr. Smoot. Well, I can do this, are there any public comments out there? Peter, you want to talk? Peter? No, I guess Peter don't want to talk, okay. No public comments, and he's... Did you want to say something? Oh, you're probably, you're Richard, right?
Yeah, he's Richard.
I'm a little slow at math. All right. All right. Okay, Mr. Smoot, you want to read in the closed session items?
Sure, the council recessed the closed session for two items, 4A and 4B, as listed on the agenda, Conference with Labor Negotiator and Conference with Real Property Negotiator.
Is there any recusals or conflicts? Not seeing any. We're going to recess to close session. All right, I'm going to call the regular meeting of Bellflower City Council to order Monday, May 12, 2025 at 7 o'clock for open session, and we've just reconvened from closed session, and to report no reportable action. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Potem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. All right, may everybody stand, we're going to have the invocation led by Councilmember Dan Coops and the Pledge of Allegiance by Elizabeth Oba, Director of Planning.
Please bow with me in a word of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this Monday evening to give you thanks for all the blessings that you've bestowed on us. We're thankful for our city, we're thankful for all the citizens that are here tonight, and thankful for our staff that works to keep Bellflower good. Be with us as we consider the items before us, give us the wisdom to do the proper thing. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to have City Council announcements first, and I will start. A video recording of the 2025 Bravo Award Ceremony is now available for public viewing on the city's YouTube channel. The video is also posted on the city's website, and is set to air on Spectrum Cable Channel number 36 prior to airing of the city council meeting through June 21st. Approximate airing days and times are Tuesdays at 5:30 PM, Thursdays at 9:30 AM, and Saturdays at 9:30 AM. Mayor Potem Sunny Santinas?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. The Bellflower Leadership Experience and Development, commonly known as LEED program, offers local teens a unique opportunity to engage with their community while building essential life and leadership skills. This summer, LEED will host an eight-week session designed to help students in the graduating classes of 2026 to 2029 prepare for life after high school. Meeting once a week, participants will explore topics such as interview techniques, team-building exercises, and general job readiness. LEED provides a supportive environment where students can build confidence and develop skills, develop tools to succeed beyond high school. Applications for the summer session are open from May 1st to June 6th. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2331, or contact M. Hardy, that's M.H.A.R.D.Y. at bellflower.ca.gov. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Sunny Santinas. Let's hear from Councilmember Wendy Morris.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Certified Farmers Market at Town Center Plaza, located at 16521 Aiden Moore Avenue, operates from 3:00 to 7:00 PM every Monday. Bless you. Excluding certain holidays. Shoppers can enjoy a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, food vendors, and handcrafted specialty items. Come support local farmers and artisans. For more details, call 562-804-1424, extension 2013, or visit www.farmandcraftmarket.com/bellflower. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Bellflower. The Clifton-Brackinson Library, located at 9945 Flower Street, invites community members of all ages to join for their in-person programs this May. These events are free, open to the public, and offer great opportunities to learn, connect, and experience all that the library has to offer. We encourage everyone to come, explore, engage, and take full advantage of these community resources. To view the full calendar of events and register, please visit Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have documents you need to dispose of securely? Bellflower's Day of the Shred returns to Thompson Park, and that's located at 14001 Bellflower Boulevard, and that's on Saturday, May 17th, and that'll be operating from 8 until 11. Historically, we always did this at Sims Park, but there's a lot of construction going on there, so we've moved the location to Thompson Park on Bellflower Boulevard. A shredding truck will be on-site to provide free document shredding for Bellflower residents. Each household may bring up to five boxes or bags of paper. The accepted materials include paper-file folders with staples, rubber bands, and small binder clips. Please do not bring phone books, hardcover books, plastics, metals, CDs, trash, or any other hazardous materials. This service is available on a first-come, first-served basis until the truck reaches capacity. Empty boxes or bags must be taken home. For more information, you can call 562-866-7510. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councilmember Coops. Okay, we have a couple of presentations tonight, one being proclaiming and declaring May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, and also proclaiming and declaring the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. So I'm going to have my colleagues meet me over here on the riser. Test it. And Luciano? Yeah. Chano, Chano, I mean, yes, Luciano, at least you figured it out. Yeah. Are you by yourself, or? Yeah, get him on up here, too. What's your name? Nice to meet you. All right, City of Bellflower proclaims National Public Works Week, People, Purpose, and Presence. Public works professionals and focus on infrastructure, facilities, services that are vital importance of sustainable and resilient to the communities and to public health. High quality of life and well-being of the people of Bellflower. This is what you do, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Therefore, I, Ray Dutton, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join and representatives of the American Public Works Association, government agencies, and events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to these working professionals. And with that, I'd like to thank you for being here and accepting this proclamation. Would you like to say a couple of things before pitchers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for your support throughout the years, appreciate it.
Why don't we get the photos here, that's for you. Sometimes we think we're comedians up here, but anyway, also, the City of Bellflower proclaims that Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is this month. And I'd like to call Wasu up here. Come on, Wasu, come on. Surprise. Surprise. This was totally last minute. Let me get, I got to read some of this to the record here. You're not getting away that easy. Yeah. You knew I wasn't, huh? On the month of May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And Asians, Americans, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have flourished to succeed our society and become vital part of our national history. Also, Asian American and Pacific Islanders have made valuable lasting contributions to our country, state, city, and achieves excess in all aspects of society, including business, medicine, education, politics, and science. And don't forget the arts. And with that, therefore, I, Ray Dutton, the Mayor of City of Bellflower, do proclaim May 2025 as Asian American Pacific Islander Month. Hey, Wasu, you want to say anything?
Oh, you want to say something?
Yeah, say something, yeah. Thank you, everyone. So, Wasu, we were, as your mayor, no, I'm talking about you, just go sit down. As mayor, you have a, you have like an assistant or whatever, he's works for the, he's an assistant for the city manager's office or whatever, and he keeps me on track, and it's, what is interesting is, he's always taking the photos. Now he was in a photo, and we just pulled this on him tonight. But anyway, we always have a sense of humor. I don't think you've heard none of that with a staff member before, have you?
Well, we did. Oh, for Asian American?
Right. All right, we're down to item 11, public comments, Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, oh, it's on. Hello. My name is Loreen Duke, and I'm a dentist on the corner of Clark and Oak, and I've been here before a couple of times, but this time it is about the homeless situation. We've had a lot of altercations this year already, and it has been quite a big problem with my staff. We arrive, the homeless are on my porch, we can't get them off, we can't go in our office. We are on the street a couple hours until the police come. They, the homeless, they're always, seem to be males, they start a verbal confrontation, they escalate to physical posturing. My female staff members are concerned, and then I can't open my office, so I make no money. I can't run a business, not making any money. We told the sheriff we'd come when they can, but it's not immediate danger, so they don't come until many hours later. My elderly patients are fearful of coming to my practice now, it's bad enough, I have steps, but now they're scared of this. The homeless intrusion onto my property and verbal abuse and potential physical altercations is not the first time, there's been many. And they sleep also with the empty medical office around the corner. What can I do to help get some help more timely? Do I have to call at 5:00 AM and say, "Come by and check my porch, I've talked to Sergeant Ferguson." He's not, he's been very helpful for a few months, but then that was it. And we shouldn't have to wait to be assaulted or be told to lie in order for the police or public safety to come, because we can lie and say he's naked, but that's not really what we want to do. So even when a man was throwing stuff and throwing it all over the street and the sidewalk and yelling profanities one block from Mamonah's School, at 7:30 in the morning, the police took two and a half hours to respond. A drive-by in the morning would help businesses, would be super, super beneficial. I talked to Sergeant Ferguson last year, he did it, I think, for a few months, we didn't have any problems. And the last thing is, let us know when a clean-out of the local encampment. When we called last week, they said, "Oh, yeah, we just cleaned out a local encampment, that's why you got homeless on your porch." If you're going to clean out a little encampment, let us know. I don't know what to say, I don't know how you let us know, because then we can expect things. I can get there at 5:00 in the morning to call the police so that we can walk in at 8:00. We have to do something to help the businesses. I am the only viable business there that, that it comes early. Across the street, nobody's working, and they don't ever camp there. They don't camp where, where there's a business, and they won't get off, so what do I do? Any questions, any thoughts, or?
Yes, I have some thoughts, yeah, and I apologize what's happened, it's a society problem, but we're trying to do the best we can. And have you contacted, are your Public Safety Director, Brian McNury?
I've done it numerous times, he gave me Ferguson's, I don't have Ferguson's number, but I have his name, and I know to call him and then ask for Ferguson, and I've done that, I've met with the cops out front.
But lately, lately, I mean, in the last...
Not in the past three months, no.
Gotcha, okay.
No.
I am going to put you together with him tonight, he is in the audience, and he'll, he'll get you, he's over there in the corner.
I haven't met you, I've just spoken to you.
Yeah, and so, and we, there is no, there's no sheriff's deputies anymore. They don't do anything, there's no patrols, there's no nothing, and that's why you get, excuse me, bad service. It's all over, it's every city, they can't, society's made it so nobody wants to be a cop anymore.
I get all that, I understand.
So we've hired Southwest Patrol, we have our own security, which is the best we can do, we spend millions of dollars a year, and I hope that Brian can get the roving security patrol to come and shoot some of these away, because that's what we've been doing, is we keep them, trying to keep them, it's, it's what we got, we all up here live the same problem you are, but it sounds like you've got a real bad problem if they're on your, on your doorstep.
It's on my doorstep, and I can't open my business. And then they were also back, the med, I don't know if you guys know where my office is, I know Sunny does, he's wonderful. There's a medical office that's empty next to me, you guys need to patrol that, because that is where they're going to break the windows, and they camp behind it, like big encampments. So it's, it's a problem.
Yeah, and sometimes we have a problem, you know, we can only, if you've got this permission on your private property is one thing, but if somebody else's, we can't get permission, but I'm going to have you work all that out with Mr. McNury
Will do.
over here, and this is, at least you got a face-to-face meeting tonight.
Yeah, and just, I appreciate it, patrol, thank you. Hi, hi, good to see you.
See, on the corner of Oak?
And Clark, yeah.
And Clark, been there a long time.
Been there for 40-plus years.
No, and being a small business person, I know what you're going through. It's no fun to be able not to operate the way you have done in the past, and you don't feel safe.
I can't go in my door.
No, and we have a patrol, and Brian will bring it up to you, that starts at midnight and works till 9:00 in the morning. And so, we're, we're going to ask Brian to put somebody patrolling and riding by your place and clearing the area out prior to you getting there, so your customers won't be intimidated. And I want to thank you for your longevity here in Bellflower, and for finding my best friend Bob a new wife.
Yes.
So, your full service over there.
I am full service, and I just, I need some help keeping it safe, thank you.
All right, okay. Hi, Priscilla.
Good evening, you know me, Priscilla Brown. I'm basically just here to back up Dr. Duke. As you know, I live down the street, and it is a problem there, so I hope you can do something for her. I didn't realize she was running into so many problems when her employees get there, but they're all females, so for them to run into that is a big problem, so just here to back her up and give her some support. I talked to her to come and to talk to you guys, because it's turning into a real big issue for her, and, you know, she's got a legitimate business that we don't want to see leave our neighborhood, because she's, she keeps her property up, she's very, you know, open to the business, I mean, if we go, if we have a problem with anything regarding her business, we go down there, talk to her, it's solved. So, she's a very good business in our neighborhood, and we want to keep her, so just, thank you very much.
Thank you. T-bird.
T-bird. You got a whole fan club here, Doc.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor, good evening, good evening, everyone here present. I'm a little bit nervous, it's my first time doing this, but...
What's your name?
First name is Ace, A-C-E, last name is El Chico. I live on Leggett and Cable Street, it's a cul-de-sac, we're supposed to be a safer area, however, it's not. I'm here because I feel scared for the safety of my family and my other neighbors. I'm afraid that if nothing changes, my parents or someone else's loved ones are seriously going to get hurt or even possibly killed. The situation we have in our area is, we have a big speeding problem in our block. Again, I'm going to emphasize this is a cul-de-sac. There are multiple cars to speed down our block, however, just one particular neighborhood has been flying in and out like it's a racetrack. This has been, this has been happening since 2022, maybe started 2022. It doesn't stop, it happens day and night. This particular person has almost hit multiple people, including my elderly parents. Myself and other neighbors have asked this person to slow down, and his response was, "It doesn't matter if I hurt people." I can't stop thinking the fact that he may hit my parents one day. We do have kids in the neighborhoods that ride their bikes, and we also have other elderly people in our street. I'm, I was recently made aware that we don't have speed bumps, or we don't implement speed bumps in City of Bellflower. In our area, the only place where we have a sidewalk is my own home, all the other homes don't have sidewalks, so we don't have protection for pedestrians. It's not just about frustration, it's about fear. Fear that every time this person or all the other speeders in our area speed down the street, that they may hit people. For the past six months, we've called Lakewood PD about 32 times or 33 times. I've spoke to Public Works, I've recently spoke to Public Safety. I've even tried to get a restraining order, and just one particular pace, a person, but nothing changes. As a resident who's been living here since 2003, who went to high school and decided to stay here in Bellflower, when we follow every rule, and I feel like we're still not being protected, I want to know what are my options and how we can deter speeders. Again, I understand that we don't use speed bumps, but maybe it's time to reconsider that, especially with what's happening in our neighborhood. Again, I want to emphasize that this is not one particular person, but multiple people. My next question is, is there any way that we can get a routine patrol in our area? What other traffic calming measures can we implement? And just please note that I'm asking for, in my opinion, something that's basic, that's going to protect people in my neighborhood. I do ask you guys to please, you know, consider something or think of something before someone gets hurt, and I end up sending up some videos that I'd like to present to everybody. We have those?
We don't play the videos in public meetings, but we did receive them, and the council has received them as well.
Okay, okay.
So Ace, you go by Ace?
Yes, sir, that's my real name.
Interesting, isn't it?
Thank you.
Are you a gambling man?
Not at all, sir, not at all, I like my money.
That's an icebreaker question. Anyway, I, I understand what you're going through, it's, the world we live in is completely different. If we were doing our two-year budget, this last, putting it together the last two months, and we all want black and whites, you have a different black and white deputy car that does just tickets. We can't get them, they're on order, but nobody wants to be a cop anymore, so we don't have them, because society just decided to say, "We don't need cops," or whatever happened, happened to society, and we're living with it. But, we're not giving up. I know, I understand that you've talked to Brian McNury, they're head of Public Safety.
Last week, sir, yes, I did.
Yeah, that, and he is, he's gave some ideas, whatever, to do with your issue, because we, he has shared that with us. And now we're hearing it from you also, which means it's really bad, are you coming, you're taking your evening away from your family to be with us instead. And we understand that. But there is things we can do, and we can push for more patrols with the less deputies that we have. We're spread thin, because we can't get them. We have the money, first time in, since I've been on the council, we've finally had money for the last five or six years, and we can't spend it. That's why we have this, you know, the Southwest Patrol to go around and, you know, go for the transients that are looming around. I would, he wanted to talk to you tonight, in person, have you talked to him in person or just on the phone?
I've never met him, it was just a phone conversation, yes, sir.
So why don't you sit tight, and he'll talk to you, and I think he's out with that other woman, the doctor.
I mean, resident.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
But we, we hear you loud and clear, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I wish there was something I could say, yes, we're going to give you patrols, I can't even promise that.
Okay.
We can shake the tree and see what happens in your neighborhood and whatever, but with all your email documentation, we have it.
Okay.
We have a record of somewhere to start.
Okay, and thank you, I, I'm aware that we're short staff, I'm very aware, but I'm really trying everything legally.
Yeah, sounds like...
Public Works, Public Safety, and I'm here and just understand this hasn't been happening for almost three years now.
We respect you coming out here tonight, and appreciate it, and the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so to speak.
Well, thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's what, Brian, Brian's going to get work on it, and at least do that. Yeah, okay.
Good evening.
Mrs. Palacios, hi.
Mayor and Councilmembers, good to see you. I do appreciate all that you've done for this city. I have a question.
What you got for us tonight?
I have two things. What, what, what happens, it looks like we're starting to have street takeovers. Last Monday night, I think it was, we had a street takeover in front of Norm's. You could see all the skid marks, so it happened, it was current, because I passed by there Monday through Friday.
Okay. I don't know.
We had a huge street takeover, there were hundreds of skid marks.
Okay.
So tonight, while I'm coming here, there's the same street takeover on Clark and, Clark and Flower, but it's one block south. There's the same skid mark, so we've had two takeovers, because the skid marks wear out after a certain amount of time. So it looks like we're starting to have street takeovers, I hope we can do something to prevent that from happening again. My neighbors wanted me to find out another thing. They, the way they repairing the cracks in the sidewalk is with tar, and the weeds are growing through the tar. So the question they had for me is, why are we replacing it with tar and with another safety hazard? And that happened when they put the trees in front of the neon yellow signs. They put, they got rid of the trees and they put tar, we had little bushes sticking up, it was really, really ugly. But they recently replaced that with some kind of sand stuff. But anyway, I didn't notice it, they noticed it, find out why they're putting the tar to fix the, and the weeds are, and now when I walk everywhere, I see it, and you're right, there's weeds, it's causing a different safety tripping hazard.
Have you called Public Works?
No.
Because they're, they're the experts on sidewalks and streets, and I'm not.
So, now I'm noticing that they, they do that, that's been a regular thing. So now I'm noticing that they, they do that. That's been a regular thing where my neighbor said, you know, can you find out why we're doing that? Okay, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is John Williams and I live immediate to the parking structure and the walking trail. And across the street from me is a repossession lot. And I think I talked to, I don't, I don't know the gentleman's name. I, I mentioned this to him before some months ago. That the cars that they bring in there, the alarms are like.
What street you live on?
Pacific.
Pacific.
Pacific Avenue, yeah.
It's all residential there.
Yeah, but across the street is a walking trail.
Oh, Jackson, across the railroad, across the bike trail.
No, it's, it's, I think it's Block.
Block, okay. It's a car auction place.
And I, I mean, you get the alarms blowing.
Oh.
The horns on these cars just back to back to back. And when I go.
Like in the middle of the night?
You know what? It doesn't happen. It, it happened in the middle of the night a couple of months ago at like two thirty AM. I went over the tow dr, truck driver. He was really cool and he apologized and said, their protocol is just before, maybe a couple of miles or so before they get to the lot, they disengage the alarm. And I've had those guys before tell me that, hey, when they get a Tesla, they have no way of doing anything with the alarm. They just have to let it blow. And I'm, I'm like, there has to be something you guys can do.
Are they unloading on Pacifica, on Pacific?
No, they don't, they don't.
It's in their lot?
It's on the lot.
It's in the lot. Okay, got it.
But, but even the cars, even when they get a Tesla, knowing that this car, they can't do anything about the alarm, which is what they tell me. They park it right along the fence.
The fence closest to you.
And, and I mean, and Long Beach is a different story with rentals, but you know, I have a few properties there and I have to pay you guys a permit to have this rentals there. Which is, is odd to me, but is that, if that's the policy, that's the policy. So I'm, I'm renting to someone that they're being annoyed by these horns blowing over there. These guys don't want to be neighborly neighbors. And, and I get told by someone here that I'm, I'm supposed to be afforded the, the quiet enjoyment of my property. But I'm not getting that. And someone needs to talk to these people because they're not listening to me. To, to try and work with your neighbors here, but it seems they don't care.
Okay, I'm gonna put you with code enforcement. Have you, you've already called them?
I went that route.
You went that route, really?
I, I've never, in Long Beach, when I dealt with code enforcement, really cool follow-up call you. But the code enforcement here, these guys are like, hey, they tell me to go kick cans or kick rocks, you know?
Let's get some more information because Brian, our director's still out in the lobby, so.
If, if I can get your contact information from you, I'll.
This is our city manager.
Okay.
And I think he'd like, he was interested in hearing that, so. Could you just give him contact information, we'll get you a call back. I think that's what we, how we handle this one.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Robert. John.
Thanks.
No, I said Robert and then, and then I didn't have my glasses on, of course. Brother. Well, that works on it. Yeah, but anyway. Anybody else wishing to come on up?
Hi, good evening. My name is Eileen Perkins and I'm happy to be one of his tenants. And I live on ninety-seven thirty Pacific and I do hear the, the car alarms going off. And right around two thirty in the morning one time. And just about every morning, they do set off at least three, three to four times.
So the concentrated time is like in the morning, eight or nine o'clock in the morning or somewhere or three or four times?
Five and nine.
Okay, I just want to write that down.
You'll, you'll get a car over there that, that alarm will go off and beep, 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 beep.
Time's out.
And then it'll, it'll cycle about, this morning it cycled about three or four times, about five times.
Yeah.
Kept going.
Guys, you guys are driving these sparklers. You guys are there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And it's still just one, one alarm at a time. Sometimes they, it, two cars at one time.
Okay.
So it's really, it drives me crazy.
How long have you lived there?
Uh, roughly eight years.
And this problem started in the last year? I'm, I'm just not, something like that? How long has it been going on? Does, does, because we've never, ever heard this before.
It's weird because one of my tenants, I, I mean, her front door's open, alarm's going off. I say, hey, Carol, is that annoying you? She goes, what? I go, the alarm. She go, oh.
Used to it?
I'm like, I don't, I don't get it.
Used to it and I guess, but you, but anyway, so something's changed in the last year at this place.
I'd say, I'd say the last three years.
Three years. Okay, so it's been going on.
Yeah.
And now it's at a point where we gotta do something about it, try to do something. Okay, got it.
And also just want to mention about the cars that are exiting the big garage, I mean, the parking structure.
Right.
They would just speed from the exit really, really fast, like it's a drag race. And I don't know how you guys can facilitate any, any resolution on that. I mean, I know he said you don't, you don't do speed bumps, but still, and there are kids that, that walk and like along the, the path. So that.
How often does you hear the, the racing out of the parking structure and down Pacific?
Throughout the day.
Is it later in the night or I'm just trying to get a target time to?
I've heard them in, in the night.
Like all times of night or daytime too? So it could happen anytime?
It could happen anytime, really, especially on the weekends.
No more on the weekends? Just trying to narrow it down to have somebody look for you. Okay.
I've heard him a few times on the weekends.
Okay. We'll keep on a lookout on that. I'll get some direction and.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for you. Did you contact any of the city's department about this?
About the alarms?
No, no, about the speeding.
The speeding? No, not yet. I'm just wanting to.
So the first time?
This is the first time I've addressed it.
Okay, okay.
But it has, it's been happening for a while. I mean, since the, since Bellflower has, had a structure built.
Okay, that's pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Okay. And then how about the alarm? Have you contacted any city's department?
Well, I just, you know, piggyback with him.
No, but, but Eileen, I know you contacted code enforcement. How about Eileen? Did you contact any of the departments?
I have not.
I have not, okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Anybody else wishing to speak something that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, not seeing any. We're gonna move on then. Okay, item twelve A, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is something you all asked us to bring back for your further review and discussion and consideration. And I'm gonna let Jim take it from there and he's got some, one of our consultants here as well to answer some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As Mr. Smoot just mentioned, we're bringing back the public hearing for the reallocation of the remaining CDBG CV funds. A brief background, we currently have four hundred and seven thousand and change in CDBG CV funds remaining from what we were allocated. The expenditure deadline for these is November twenty-twenty-six or we have to return the funds. The funds also must meet eligibility requirements established by HUD for both regular CDBG and CDBG CV funds. Here's a, a, a quick snapshot, if you will, of the, on the programs in which we've spent the funds thus far. We spent about seven hundred and eighty-one thousand of the one point two million dollars that we were allocated, leaving us with the four hundred and seven thousand dollars. So there are certain requirements that are required for CV funds. And the eligible uses pursuant to those requirements are public services, public facilities and improvements, economic development, ongoing coronavirus recovery, and they allow us twenty percent of that allocation to be used on administration and planning. Interesting to note here, the top three bullet points are typical CDBG eligible, regular CDBG fund eligible items. With the fourth bullet point kind of specific to coronavirus. And so we'll get into a little bit of why the three above are a little bit more difficult to spend, right, with, with the next couple of slides. So one of the first main things that we have to qualify for is a CDBG national objective. And to do that, the easiest thing we can do is make sure that we spend these funds for the benefit of low and moderate income persons. And we're doing that by having one of these projects be located in a CDBG low and moderate income area. The other thing we have to meet is that the, there are eligible CDBG activities or costs. And those are what I just went over in the previous slide. And the third thing is the tricky one, is the tieback to coronavirus. And I'm gonna read the, the requirement of that right off the HUD guidelines. And that is to, a project must be designed to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus by documenting a logical relationship between the benefits of the activity and the effect of the coronavirus. So it makes it a little trickier to spend and we have to hit that sweet spot where those circles intersect in order to spend these funds effectively and eligibility. So over the past few months, we've had some projects for consideration. Some were brought to us by council at the last meeting when we presented this the last time. And staff had come up with some in the past and currently as well. This is a list of those and some of them have multiple projects within them. They're kind of categorized and some are specific projects. And I'm gonna go into those in a little more detail here. We're gonna start with the projects that we've determined to be ineligible because they haven't been able to meet the COVID tieback or for other reasons. And then we'll talk about the projects that are eligible and then the ones that are potentially eligible and we'll make our recommendations. So these are the projects that have been determined to be ineligible for various reasons. For example, the executive track street lighting, which we talked about at the last council meeting. That's not in a CDBG low and moderate income area, so that would not be eligible. And these other ones are ineligible for various reasons and we can come back and talk about those later if you have any specific questions to any of those projects. These are the group of projects that have been determined to be eligible. So the first item on that list is the item that we brought to you last time as a recommendation. And the reason why that's on this list and determined to be eligible is because staff had brought that to a HUD representative up in Los Angeles at HUD headquarters and got feedback from them that a project such as that, as long as it had features that were created to encourage social distancing, could be eligible for CDBG CV funds. The other items, the additional business grants and the additional public services, which were the grants to the nonprofits or sub-grantees. Those are eligible because we've done them already and they were part of a previous substantial amendment for the coronavirus funds. There are the projects to be, that have been determined to be potentially eligible. So the first one is improvements to public serving areas of city facilities, like the city hall lobbies, parks and rec lobbies, bathrooms and so forth. And there are limited improvement project options, even though these are eligible use of the funds. We don't have a whole lot to do. We did a lot of that when coronavirus hit and we did many of those things already. And we don't think we can use all those funds in one fell swoop. The other three items, I'm gonna go over in a little bit more detail. And we feel that they meet the requirements of the coronavirus funds and would be our rec, one of those three, including the previous one that we recommended last month, would be the four projects that we would recommend. Going back to thirty days ago, this is the project that we initially recommended, the Town Center Gateway Plaza pedestrian area redesign. It's a redesign of that plaza area from the alley to Bellflower Boulevard to provide a socially distanced gathering space for pedestrians, attendees of city events and customers of the kiosk businesses. This would be eligible and that is a site rehabilitation or reconfiguration of existing outdoor public pedestrian space to support safe outdoor public use and pandemic resilience. This is the Laurel Street pedestrian plaza conversion. And as the name suggests, this would be the conversion of the Laurel Street entryway to a multi-use, open space pedestrian plaza, incorporating various socially distanced public gathering event elements. This appears to fit with the COVID tieback by converting public infrastructure and outdoor area to allow for safer community gathering and socially distanced activities, creating outdoor recreational space where it didn't exist previously. The third item is the Palm Street Park Fitness or Amenity Zone Activation. This is on the corner of Clark Avenue and Palm Street. This concept would be to reimagine and activate Palm Street Park's underutilized space on the corner with a new fitness zone or wellness-focused amenity area to support safe, socially-distanced public use and pandemic resilience. This could include adding permanent outdoor fitness equipment, hand sanitizing stations, ADA access improvements, shade structures and lighting. And finally, the fourth recommendation would be the New Neighborhood Pocket Park, south of the ninety-one freeway. This would be located at ninety-four forty-three Artesia Boulevard on city-owned property that the city acquired from the successor agency. This would be the development of new pocket park, as I mentioned, on city-owned parcel. It appears to meet eligibility requirements by creating a new outdoor recreational facility to increase access to socially-distanced recreation opportunities. It is important to note here that the, from the Parks and Rec Master Plan, the planning level cost for a park of this size and nature is around nine hundred thousand dollars, requiring the CDBG funds to be paired with another funding source to complete the project. And in fact, for all these potential eligible projects, designs and project costs have yet to be determined and might require additional funding. However, to ensure that the CDBG CV funds are expended by the deadline, these specialized funds would be the first funds spent on the chosen project if you were to decide to go forward with it. So the next steps basically are to have that discussion and find out which project you would like us to proceed with. And we would return to you later in the month with the substantial amendment officially reallocating these funds. That concludes my presentation and staff, as well as our consultant, Anna Lunu from Avantgard, are here to answer any of your questions.
So that's all we got to pick from? I was just gonna say it.
It was a challenge. We talked to Public Works, we talked to Parks and Rec. And these are the projects that we came up with that we could potentially throw this money at.
Yeah, there are a lot of strings attached. I understand that, but I think, I, I don't, I think we could do better. Anyway, that's just me. Any questions, the staff?
Well, the, one of the items you put up there was economic development. Wasn't that one of the possibilities?
That was, Councilmember Coops?
Yes.
I just, it's just words. I don't have a picture for that one.
No, I get it.
Yeah, no pictures, yeah.
That would kind of be additional business grants like we did before. The problem with that, if that's what you're thinking, is that it'd be really hard for those businesses to document COVID impacts and to try to document that and not, if we were to get audited, those funds could be at risk. Which is why we kind of didn't push that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Well, I don't want to interrupt.
Let me finish what my thought was, is remember we, we had a discussion about corner of Oak and Bellflower Boulevard and how that project got out of hand with eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And when we said economics and we could rehab the outside of those buildings to make them so they're compatible to the Serrano project, I thought that'd be a perfect place to use it. But again, how do we tie it into how we have had a negative impact on COVID? You know, but at the same time, the project you're suggesting, which I think was your star, the last meeting that we found issue with, and now it seems to be coming to the top of the, top of the water, is back to the area on Belmont on the corner where the kiosk are.
Oh, they were in no particular order.
No, but I, I feel like that one there has got predominance for some reason. And put the picture back that up of that potential project.
Of the kiosks?
There you go. Now, to spend four hundred and seven thousand dollars. Now, to spend $407,000 there, I'm wondering in my mind's eye, other than removing those trees, what else could be done to change what we have there? I mean, it's, it's built out, I mean, and it's not a lot of square footage. Have you any ideas of what you would do with that?
We'd leave that a little bit up to the designer, but we would anticipate the trees in the sidewalk and those sitting benches all coming out and all being replaced with different amenities and so forth, the benches and the trees along, in front of the kiosks also being adjusted to create social distancing.
Because there's not social distancing now, we're going to improve on that?
That's, that's the goal, yeah, that's the goal of those funds, yes, that's what we're saying.
I think we promote that with what we have, how we're going to improve upon that, is what I'm trying to say. I'm still, and again, if you wanted to use this money to help us, a floundering business, again, is that a crawl back into the COVID idea that if they were saving this business with $10,000 grant because their business failed or was impacted during the COVID? Or how does that go?
That's, I could have Anna Lunu talk about that too, but yes, they'd have to, they have to further document that they need that, those monies because of COVID, and that being five years away from COVID now, that could be a significantly difficult thing to do.
So simply showing your business was better before COVID and not as good after COVID, that wouldn't be sufficient? Because I think we have many businesses in that situation.
One of the big challenges for those types of grants, hello everybody, good evening, is that you do have to tie back their financials to, you know, immediately after COVID. So you have to show before COVID how you did, and then after COVID. The problem is now we're five year, you know, four or five years out, most numbers have already increased, hopefully, and for those that haven't, they're likely their businesses are gone. So it's just difficult to properly document that they're eligible based on the guidelines.
You know, my viewpoint is, I want to use the money, but I don't want to waste the money. Understand what I'm saying?
I get that.
It's not prudent for us to be able to send, in November 26th, say, oh, we didn't find a place for it, here's your money back. That don't sound good. But at the same time, whatever we do has got to prove to be a real advantage to our city. Go ahead, Victor, you had a question.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for our Director of Parks and Rec, as it relates, or Jim, I don't know who's prepared to answer these, with relations to the Palm Park Fitness and then the Pocket Park potential. What, I know you talked about the Pocket Park and the additional added costs that would take to make that happen, but what about the Palm Street Park Fitness? Can we, is there an additional cost of that, or can we build it in with?
Well, PJ's going to come up and help with that, but we're not sure, again, because we've not done any designs or anything yet, so we're kind of a little bit on the back foot, but he may have some estimated costs.
Just before you say what you're going to say, or whatever you may say, PJ, I just want to start off by saying that I know that we acknowledge with our Park Master Plan that we are park poor in general. So I personally don't see necessarily too much wrong with our, you know, no offense, Mr. Delonga, with the Town Center Gateway Plaza, you know, and actually, out of the two, I would lean more to the Laurel Street pedestrian plaza conversion over those two. But then if we have a chance at Pocket Park, and it might just be a stage of life where I am, I've got, you know, two little ones and whatnot, and a third on the way next month, so that might just be me speaking as a father, but I'm a little bit more interested in these two.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and council members. Both of those properties, when we were discussing this, the reason they were identified is we own them, and that, the timeline of everything speeds that up a little bit. The Pocket Park, as mentioned, could be close to $1 million, $900,000. This is where we would imagine using those Measure A funds that we have that are set aside, where we could combine those two funding sources for a project like that. I imagine the corner of Palm Street Park would be over $400,000, no matter what we do there, because you are looking at completely redesigning that with, if we did a fitness zone or anything there, you're basically scraping what you have there and then putting in new amenities. But again, we do have those park funding sources available to match those. The one thing I do want to mention, which if it does end up going down this road on the Artesia property, it is within a certain distance of a dispenser area, so that may be something we do have to evaluate closely to see if that's legally even possible, so.
Who would know the answer to that?
Cut and dried rule, how many feet you got to be away?
Exactly.
Are you thinking from a HUD standpoint, PJ?
No, I'm just thinking in general, from a park facility, whatever our ordinance is, from a legal standpoint, I'm not sure what the answer is on that.
Okay. My next question, Mr. Delonga, is what's our timing again that we have to use this by? If not, we, we lose it?
November 2026.
And that, that means the project has to be completed, wrapped up, all the finances done, and our invoicing back out to HUD to be, you know, reimbursed by November 26th. These are part of the challenges with any of these projects, to be honest. It's a very tight window of projects that fit into this pool that we can get done in the appropriate amount of time, that fit in within the funding available or slightly over it, if the council wants to devote extra funding to it, and that fit the COVID tieback. It's a tight pool of projects, to be honest.
And there's no way that we could just, like, renovate an existing park with this
I believe that would be eligible.
It's eligible if you're creating, if you're renovating the space so that it's better utilized as outdoor space. So you can renovate, let's say you have poorly structured picnic areas, or you want to put more lighting outside in the park area and, you know, improve walkways.
I could see that as a more feasible path, as much as I would, yeah.
Lighting works for COVID?
It needs to be all part of the project. It can't be a standalone lighting project, but it would be part of your renovation.
That sounds like a more viable idea, this, and remodeling something. I can't see making a new park, we can't even keep the homeless out of that sucker. I don't know how you took the picture and not have a homeless person in there. That amazes me. There's a board meeting there every four o'clock, about five or six people hanging out and sleeping in there. And then you want to, that one vacant land, make it a park, there's not got a hidey hole for them.
I think there is someone.
Right now, we can't even keep them off the business of stoops. Jesus.
Are you guys looking for a direction?
No, I think maybe we ought to rethink it and do some kind of remodeling of a recreation area.
I'm done for now, yeah, I'm just thinking.
I have a question. We had a discussion regarding improving, improving the shelters in, the picnic shelters in the parks. Is that something that can be done eligible for this, for this grant? The picnic shelters in the park?
Yeah, the, one of the first questions would be if you've already budgeted for any of those, those types of improvements. If you haven't, then it would be eligible.
The second question would be, is it in a CDBG low and moderate income area of the city? We want to make sure of that, so Thompson Park is.
I know for one is Sims Park is.
Sims Park is, yes.
It's in the CDBG area.
Right.
Is that in the budget already to renovate the picnic shelter? Oh, no, of Sims Park. But Thompson Park is not in the eligible area.
Len mentioned that Thompson Park is, Sims Park is not.
Yeah, so I don't, I believe Thompson is the one that we put in the budget for the shelter rehab. We did not put a shelter rehab in for Sims Park.
Okay, so why don't we look at the renovating the picnic shelter at Sims Park? Because that's CDBG eligible. That area is. And we already budgeted the Thompson Park picnic shelter already, right?
Well, it's, it's in the proposed budget. It's not in an adopted budget yet.
But we can supplant that. So I would say, take a look at the picnic shelter of Sims Park.
The other issue is that there, it probably wouldn't cover the whole $400,000.
Okay, but that's.
Yeah, we could do more than one.
Which is okay, if the council wants to, if the council feels that that's a more appropriate project for the use of these funds, then I would suggest go forward with the project that you think is useful, use of these funds, even if it doesn't hit the $400,000. That's okay, at least you're using as much of these funds as you can.
Or if it goes over a little, it goes over a little.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor. Going back to councilmembers, a question about the development, can you go back to it again? My suggestion is, what is your idea in terms of social distancing? I mean, make it smaller seating areas instead of the long ones? What's your idea? What's your concept?
That is kind of the concept, and we would leave it up to a designer, tell him what the requirements of social distancing are, what those requirements are, and have him help us design that for that location. We included this, it, it's not our priority project, it was one that we thought would fit the requirements, and so we threw it in there, and it would spend all the money. And so it would, it would, you know, we would leave that up to a designer to help us figure that out, because it isn't an easy thing to, to design and come up with ourselves.
So maybe one idea is, if we cannot use up all the money on Sims Park picnic shelter, maybe we can use part of that money here. But at least divide this, because my concern here is, in terms of the length of the cement that can be used for skateboarding. But if you kind of divide it into smaller sections, then it accomplishes two things. One, you reduce the chance of being used for skateboard, and two is for social distancing, which I think we qualify under these COVID requirements.
Right.
But, but the bottom line is, I don't want to spend anything more than $407,000.
How much?
For this. Not more than $407,000 for all combined, because I don't want to put any more of the general fund money into this money that we need to spend. Okay.
Mayor Protem, real quick, just let me correct, so what's in the proposed budget is the shelter remodels at both parks. So we have Sims in there, yeah, so Anna just pointed that out to me. But again, it's not an adopted budget yet, it's proposed, so if we were going to change it, we'd want to change it quick.
How much was budgeted for the Thompson Park and Sims Park? Fifty each? So 25, 25?
Yes, it's a long shot.
Mr. Mayor, I have an idea too.
It's still a long ways to go.
I'd like to throw this out there. We have a, we have a problem with the, help me out here, in front of Pirate Park, the, the fountain. What if we use this fund to renovate that area, get rid of the fountain, do some benches there, some social distancing benches, so that, you know, there's seating areas for people to sit while the kids are playing in the Pirate Park?
Does that qualify?
We could kill two birds with one stone.
That's a good idea.
Kill a lot of birds.
Got to get remodeled.
Not real birds, people.
So how far are we in the design of the fountain? It was in the works, right?
No, there, there's no design. Punching holes in the bottom, putting dirt in it.
Flatten it out, flatten it out, cover it up, and put some cool benches.
At least we can get it demoed.
Yeah, we can get it demoed. I like that idea.
Yeah, little plaza. Little social distancing plaza by the Christmas tree.
I don't think there's much design in that one.
So we need to get some kind of estimates to make sure that we're going to be spending this, this amount of money?
My suggestion, I mean, look, I can't imagine that project would be too dissimilar from this one, probably a little bit more expensive if anything. But if the council has consensus on that, my suggestion is you give us the direction to come back with you with a resolution to reallocate these funds for that purpose, and then we can start that process, but at least we've got the HUD process started out.
Yeah.
At least you have.
Okay, we got, we got, we got an idea now.
Sure.
Yeah, we got something, we got something to shoot for.
I'm just trying to not squeeze as much time.
So, Mayor and members of the council, the funds that we're proposing to use can be used for design and construction for the project, so it wouldn't be general fund money being used for the, the design, we'd be able to use it all as a package.
All right. Let's get some kind of image that we want in our minds and all in the same page, and then we can go forward, but anything like the fountain at the Christmas tree, or the, or something in the parks, revitalize, because if, if we're the agency and we're the property, it's easier for us to do our own property and gets quicker, like you said. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Len, when I look at this project here, back to Belmont Street, it wouldn't be a big expense to have our tree people come out and remove those two trees on the right and grind out the stumps. I mean, that's a hazard unto itself. Would that be a big expense?
No, but the, the damage that's been done to the, the existing sidewalk and all that, that would have to be replaced as well. I mean, if we went in there to take care of the trees, fix the, the irrigation that's been fouled up from the, from the tree roots.
The electrical too.
And, yeah, fix the, yeah, so it would, it would be basically that entire area that you see there on the picture, which is the trees, the greenway, the walking path, the slump wall, that would all be redesigned to eliminate that landscaping there and create a, a broader open space, kind of mini plaza, and we would do, you know, selective, social distancing, I guess, seating, and, and carry that on throughout, down in front of the kiosk as well.
If we were to use CV funds for this.
Well, what I'm thinking is, if you come up with a design for what Victor suggested, which was a brilliant idea, then, and there's some money left over, maybe for 50 or 75,000, we can do a.
Something out of pocket.
Yeah, or, you know, that could stand a little bit of help there. I don't know what, those trees in front of the kiosk, they really don't.
They're fine.
Right. But I think over here, I would think 50,000 go a long way to getting rid of trees, putting in some lights, and fix the sidewalk, but that's just.
Now, let's move on, we're not here for that tonight. Excuse me. We're not designing.
No, but if we could, at least we've got a place that we can spend the money in a coherent way.
What I would suggest is if you're, if the council's looking at some of these projects, I would suggest you reallocate this funding for one particular project. It makes, it will make the HUD process a lot easier to get through their hurdles if we have one particular project. Obviously, if there's leftover, if we need some extra, we'd have to come back to you, and we can start discussing that, because I think you'll have this discussion about this area at some point anyway, given the condition of the trees.
All right.
So we're hearing that you want us.
Sheen, I hate to say this, you got enough direction for now?
I think so, thank you. So we're heading for the redesign of the fountain area in front of Pirate Park in a social distancing manner.
And reprogram the, the park, the picnic structures at the parks if we have to.
Okay.
Or something like that, I don't know.
Well, the main project.
But to the city managers, to use it all in one lump sum is a lot easier to disperse.
It is, yeah, so we'll be back in, on the 27th with that formal reallocation.
Okay, you got enough brainstorming with them.
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, so I'll just put that out there.
So we'll.
Oh, this?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor for, for open the public hearing with the councilmember Sanchez, and the second by Coops. Without objection, that'll be the order. Is there anybody in the audience that want to chime on, chime in on what we've just been talking about? Trying to get rid of $406,000 of highly restricted COVID funds.
Invest.
My name is Sophia Partita. I just wanted to, you know, come up as a citizen and vouch for either of the plaza redesign projects, either the Laurel Plaza or Victor's proposed, what was it, Friendship or outside of Pirate Park? I just feel like there's a lot of benefits to having those social spaces for our citizens, and, you know, I would love to see the city invest in that, so that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Anyone else?
Who to close the public hearing?
A second.
Okay. Without objection, that'll be the order.
So you need a motion?
So do you need a, you want action on this?
That would be fantastic, if you would, yes. Yes, that would be fantastic, if you would.
So should we leave the public hearing open?
No.
No.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I know, reopen, I mean, I know it's, we can reopen it next time, we don't have to notice people.
Oh, we can take action now.
Yeah, you can take action now.
We can take action now without opening the public hearing.
They can, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to.
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to utilize the CDBGCV funding to the redesign, the, what's that called? The fountain area in front of Pirate Park.
Broken fountain by the Christmas tree and Pirate Park.
What's it called? Friendship Square, to be a more friendly, COVID-friendly, anti-COVID, I don't know.
Yeah, we want to make it friendly for COVID.
I'm sick. No, you know what I mean. Social distancing. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
You know what?
We got a motion on 12A from Councilmember Sanchez, and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify if the motion also includes the continuance of the public hearing to May 27?
Because we have to bring you back to resolution.
Yes.
Yes.
May 27.
I made my motion to include that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's why I was going to reopen it, and let's leave it open.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers...
Is people noticed when we do a public hearing? We notice, don't we?
Is there anybody? Three hundred.
Yeah, you went through the publishing process when we did this originally.
Just to pronounce, okay, so we don't have to mail it.
This is continued to continue it.
Got it.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santanes?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Is the public warm out there? I see...
It's cooking.
It's cooking.
All right, we'll make it hotter. No, we'll see if we can cool it down a little bit.
I think the air conditioner must be broke. I don't know. Yes. It's broke. We just got a nod from Public Works.
Really?
Yeah, I know it's... It's cooking. Okay, Mr. Smooth, you want to introduce item 12B?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a continuation of an item from your last meeting that you allowed us to have some more discussions with, and is back before you this evening. I believe Beth's team is available.
I'll need to recuse myself, I have a, my employer has a property conflict.
All right. Let the record show that Councilmember Morse is recused for a property conflict. Okay, you want to start with an overview?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The presentation for this project was made at the last City Council meeting on April 28. At that meeting, it was discussed that the appellant went to work with staff to explore alternatives related to traffic, and the City Council continued that item for that conversation to occur. On May 1, city staff met with the appellant's project design team to discuss that alternative, and it included installing a two-way left turn lane along Bellflower Boulevard to help mitigate traffic conditions. This alternative would result in red curbing on both sides of Bellflower Boulevard and would eliminate street parking. Following that meeting on May 5, the project team informed staff that McDonald's would not expend the additional funding for those improvements, and a letter from the McDonald's team regarding that was included in your staff report. Therefore, the project is being brought back to the City Council as previously presented. The recommendation tonight is to reopen the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 25-15, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. If the council would like a recap of the project, Catherine will go over the slides that was previously presented. Otherwise, staff is available for any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, let's start with staff. Does anybody have any questions to staff at the moment?
I have none.
Victor, you have any questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't either. All right, so...
Want me to open the public hearing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Move to open the public hearing.
I think reopen.
Reopen the public hearing.
On the second.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor to reopen the public hearing, and a second. Without objection, that'll be the order. All right, let's hear from the applicant first, from McDonald's Corp, and... Hi.
Sorry, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time this evening. As I believe you are aware, McDonald's intends to invest heavily in the city of Bellflower. This would be the second of three planned locations in the city. As you're aware, the first restaurant was opened at Artesian Woodruff, and was the first on-the-go concept in the nation, and it happened here in Bellflower. The project you have before you is more of a standard offering from McDonald's. It includes a traditional lobby, double drive-through, and outdoor seating. The site was designed such that the drive-through would operate without any effect of traffic on the, on Bellflower Boulevard. We worked with staff in excess of 12 to 14 months from initial concept to formal submittal. From this, staff did recommend the project for approval twice to the planning commission. From these meetings, several changes occurred. We included outdoor seating, we improved pedestrian access and landscape, we improved parking, meaning the site is overparked. It actually has 23 spots provided versus the 13 required. The reason for this is we would like to be more pedestrian-centric. As you're aware, this is a difficult parcel, due to its shape and its location. The nearby shopping center owner, Auburndale Properties, will only allow cross-access if they can purchase the property from the landowner outright. The landowner only wishes to sell the property for what would be considered an exorbitant fee. This leaves the deal almost impossible, and makes the project not economically viable. Bellflower Boulevard, as you're aware, cannot be widened, and the parcel is basically too small to attract significant development. We believe that McDonald's fills a unique need, and is likely the only viable project for this for the next 10 to 20 years. If the project would be considered for residential development, that development would exacerbate all issues that are currently faced by McDonald's development. Additionally, the landowner has stated publicly that he doesn't want anything else than a McDonald's project, and he's willing to pursue a long-term ground lease. From an economic development standpoint, we believe the restaurant will provide millions of dollars of revenue per year, which translates to hundreds of thousands in sales tax revenue. Further, at a minimum, 45 to 55 employees would be needed at the McDonald's for providing those jobs. That is, without the digital delivery aspect of it, which in essence is about 10 to 12 additional employees. There are a couple proactive conditions that we are willing to agree to. We're willing to agree to off-peak delivery times, if that is required by the city of Bellflower. We will meet with the traffic engineers and staff, and we will install delineators if it's requested, and they believe it would be a benefit. And basically, we are stating that we will do whatever the city of Bellflower deems necessary to mitigate any traffic concerns. In summary, the project does not ask for any variances to be approved. It meets all development criteria. The project has been thoroughly vetted by staff, and was recommended for approval twice. The other item we'd like to do, to state, is McDonald's is a proven business with proactive involvement, and a local franchisee that was awarded California Businesswoman of the Year for her many accomplishments, as well as her community involvement. We believe McDonald's is the development that best fits this unique and somewhat difficult site. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our proposed franchisee, Patty Yun, and let her speak as well, and Patty?
Could, would it be possible to show the elevations of the property for staff?
Good evening.
Hi, Patty.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Patty Yun, and I'm a McDonald's franchisee, a proud immigrant from Korea, and a first-generation FEMA owner-operator. I own and operate 14 McDonald's restaurants across LA County, including Norwalk, Southgate, Santa Fe Springs, Hollywood, and right here in Bellflower. Bellflower is incredibly special to me. The location is home to the first McDonald's in the United States equipped with digital delivery lockers, and it's also a to-go-only restaurant. A new model, we are piloting right here in Bellflower. This innovation is designed to create a modern, efficient, and convenient customer experience, and I'm so proud to do it here with everyone. I'd like to touch on a few key areas where we're committed to being a great community partner. We believe in showing up for our communities in meaningful ways. One of our signature initiatives is Yun's Happy Meal to help program, a meal donation program that we provide thousands of meals across the cities we serve. We partner with public programs like parks and recreation departments, schools, and nonprofit organizations to support children and families in need. Some of the other examples of our community involvement are sponsoring local high school sports team programs, supporting the Southgate Police Department for their autism awareness event, hosting fundraisers for schools such as McTeachers' Nights, partner with organizations that support students to foster care or are facing housing insecurity, offering free meals to all of our local law enforcement for all of our restaurants. We also host events like Coffee with a Cop to build stronger community ties, and I serve on the board of the Ronald McDonald's House on the West Side, which provides housing for families with critically ill children. This year, I was honored to be selected as the Senate District 30 California Woman of the Year, a recognition I share with the communities and teams I serve. Safety is a top priority. At Bellflower, we've implemented several proactive measures, including upgraded security cameras, bright lighting, and 15-minute travel paths to ensure the property remains clean and safe. We also maintain strong communication with local law enforcement. To keep the traffic flowing smoothly, we use handheld order takers during peak hours in the drive-through and closely monitor operations. On average, it takes 2 minutes and 8 seconds from order of the food to delivery in the drive-through. We have a dedicated maintenance team that ensures our facilities are well-maintained, inside and out. Our team conducts travel paths every 15 minutes to monitor and address cleanliness both inside and outside of the restaurant, including the public sidewalks. We sweep the lot, empty the bins, and keep the landscaping professionally maintained to reflect positively on the neighborhood. Over 95% of our Bellflower crew members live within five miles of our restaurant. We invest heavily in our people, offering tuition assistance through archways to opportunity, management development programs, and certifications. One great example is Wyatt. I'm not sure if you've met him in our Bellflower restaurant. He's a Bellflower resident who is currently training to become the general manager of our new Bellflower location if approved by the city. He is also working towards becoming a certified organizational technical professional, which we have a program for, demonstrating our commitment to growing leaders from within the community. In addition, we recently acquired three residential properties in Bellflower to provide subsidized housing for our mid-management team, helping ease the burden of rising housing costs and supporting our goal of long-term leadership development within the local area. We're here to be more than a business, we're here to be a reliable partner, a good neighbor, and a proud part of Bellflower's continued growth. Thank you again for your time and welcoming into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Any questions for myself for Patty?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, I'll start off with the walk-me-through, the conversation, or the reasoning why, I don't know, whoever decided they wouldn't be willing to invest any more money into helping mitigate the entrance and the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting?
It basically became an economic consideration for the project.
And then, in your letter that was provided, what does the section that Aldi's, that is mentioned and is brought up related to their part in it, what does that mean? I can't, I don't understand what you're saying here.
Auburndale Properties refused to consider cross-access unless they were able to buy the parcel outright.
Okay, so that's your sentence, exactly zero additional dollars for proposed amendments. Essentially, they're not willing to invest?
Auburndale or McDonald's?
Well, it states, after our meeting, we were unfortunately informed by corporate that Bellflower Aldi site now has, that now has exactly zero additional dollars for proposed amendments.
Yeah.
Oh, you call it Bellflower Aldi's because it's next, never mind. I thought you were talking, I thought Aldi, never mind.
I understand.
Property owner. Either property owner.
I get it now.
I hope you feel better, by the way.
Yeah, thank you.
I had that about two weeks ago, it hurts.
It's going around. Okay. All right. I briefly mentioned at the last meeting, and through ex parte communication, which I disclosed at the last meeting, concerns about the aesthetics and it fitting in the area. Has there been any conversation about that? About, or is this, is this it, take it or leave it kind of a thing?
No, if there's modifications to the elevations specifically, we can address those. We believe the outdoor seating, as well as the landscaping, will be significant improvement versus the existing conditions. And we believe Artesian Woodruff is a very good example of what McDonald's development can do for a particular corner or piece of property. I drove by that tonight, and if you look, if you compare that before and after, I'm extremely proud with how that transformed that corner.
All right, thank you. All right, no further questions for now, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions down there?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
You alluded to the potential income for the city and the volume of the business. Can you be a little more exact in what you hope this property to generate in terms of volume?
I can speak in generalities of this, but I cannot speak to this corner specifically.
No, I don't expect you to.
But we would anticipate revenues being between $3 and $5 million a year.
Okay.
I know that's a wide range, but I'm sorry, I'm not able to...
No, but it gives me an idea, you know, is it 10 million or 1 million? But it's kind of in between the two. There was one paragraph in the report here that I found interesting, if not troubling. It says, "If the City Council asks irrelevant questions and bases its decision-making on such questions, a court may overturn the City Council's decision and hold the city potentially liable for violating the appellant's constitutionally-protected due process rights." That makes me, I don't even want to ask you a question for her, I'm going to get sued.
And I can assure you that was not written by the person speaking at this moment.
But you understand my concern.
I do.
If we don't approve this, you're going to sue us, you know?
Yeah, I...
That's what that leads me to believe, you know?
I, no, sir, I understood, I was unaware of that writing.
Okay.
I will leave it at that.
All right, I have no other questions.
And I apologize for the tone of that.
Yeah, we all read it.
You concerned it.
We all read it.
Again, I...
We all think it.
Understood, sir.
Mr. Mayor, having said that, then I have to be very careful in terms of the question I asked.
Read that paragraph, yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, feel free to ask me anything.
I'm just going to refer to the letter written by Mr. Robert Priest, the principal design, and it's on the record. Okay, are you familiar with that letter?
I was aware that he filed the appeal, but I did not.
Okay, so I just want to kind of talk about several points, which I think I kind of alluded at the last public hearing. First question is, in his letter, number two item, he said that traffic is also further enhanced because there is a metro rail, light rail station planned almost adjacent to the site, and there will be upgrade crossings proposed to be happening up every two and a half minutes, and stopping traffic. So... So was he alluding to that there's no impact on traffic once we have that veil?
No, I think what he's alluding to is the fact that the restaurant will actually take traffic off of the road for a period of time and does provide parking for twenty-three spaces, or for twenty-three vehicles. And that those cars are essentially, it's taking traffic off the road for a period of time, not adding trips during that time.
But with cars, well, I just want to be very clear about this. It's an endorsement of McDonald's, but I love McDonald's, okay?
We appreciate that.
I'm not endorsing it, but I love McDonald's.
If you're a current customer, we appreciate that as well.
My point here is, if you had a business on Bellflower Boulevard, I want you to succeed. That means there's gonna be more cars going there, or more foot traffic. But most likely, living in California, people will be driving, most likely. So having said that, with the light rail coming to Bellflower, that will add more traffic on downtown Bellflower.
The light rail will?
The light rail.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just questioning that kind of argument that there won't be any, any impact on Bellflower Boulevard even with the light rail. It is coming. And second point is, and I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the reasons for appeal is that the start date, and I quote, "The start date for metro rail operations is unknown currently." And as mentioned, I want to put it on the record, that I reached out to Ms. Viviana Gomez, who is the Transportation Deputy for Supervisor Janison, who is currently the Metro Board Chair. And she's, I want to enter in the record, she responded back to my question, and she said, "The first phase of southeast Gateway Line, that's fourteen and a half miles stretch from Schlossen A-Line Station, is scheduled to be completed in 2035." Okay, again, it's not coming from me, it's coming from the metro. So I want to hand it to the city clerk for the record, that I reached out to Metro and they gave me that information. On the appeal also, it says that the vol, and this is A number two, "The volume of store and traffic analysis show that there are no added trips on Bellflower compared to pre-development." And I want to repeat my statement at the last meeting, again, I love McDonald's.
Right.
If I want McDonald's, which I do, and this, if this store is open, this will be the closest to my house. Okay, by the way, currently there are three McDonald's stores in Bellflower. There's one, there's one in Lakewood.
Agreed.
Sado Belondra, there's one on Downey and Artisia, and just like, and as Patty Yun mentioned, the, the On The Go McDonald's on Woodruff and Artisia, okay? But closest to my house will be this one. And so if I'm hungry, I want to grab McDonald's, I'll go to this place. So my question, which wasn't answered the last time, there was no opportunity to answer my question, is, won't that, won't my trip count towards traffic analysis?
It will. We have our traffic engineer here, but what I believe that is stating is, there are trips generated, but when you compare them to existing trips, the increase is nominal. So would you like to discuss that further?
But, sir, I wouldn't normally go to Bellflower Boulevard, but I'm starving, and I love McDonald's, okay? I'm gonna go there.
Understood.
Okay, so that means I'm adding more cars on Bellflower Boulevard during the time.
Yeah.
So educate me here.
Hello, my name is Robert Vu. I'm a licensed traffic engineer in the state of California, and I prepared this traffic analysis. And before I answer your question, I wanted to give a little bit of background. Early on in the process, we met with city staff, and we prepared our traffic analysis to fit the city's traffic engineering policies and guidelines, and it's also consistent with other studies done in the area. In the traffic analysis, we used a conservative trip generation, and we assumed that this McDonald's project will generate eight hundred and twenty-four daily trips. And that's using industry standard, and we added that on top of existing traffic, and then we also added it on top of opening year traffic, which assumes the light rail metro and the full occupancy of the apartment buildings on Main. And adding the proposed McDonald's onto existing traffic, it maintains the existing level of service based on the city's traffic engineering standards. And then under opening year with the addition of the light rail transit, McDonald's, and other known cumulative projects, it changes the level of service from A to B or B to C in some peak hours. And in our analysis, we did a traffic progression analysis that assumes the traffic signals all along the corridor and any increase in traffic, and within that analysis methodology, the corridor still operates under acceptable levels of service. So in the, in short, the traffic analysis adds net new trips to assume the most conservative analysis. And within that conservative analysis, the corridor still operates under acceptable levels of service.
So, so my trip has already been counted?
Yes.
So to speak?
In the traffic analysis, yes.
Oh, okay. So you mentioned about the, the main apartments, once it is fully occupied, did you mention that?
Right.
Yeah, Edgeway, yeah.
Edgeway?
During the preparation of the traffic analysis, I believe there is still construction of those apartments, and it wasn't fully occupied. So we met with city staff, and we agreed to add the full trip generation from that, assuming full occupancy, people parking, driving, and all that. So we added it on top of existing traffic.
Have you driven the length of Bellflower Boulevard, let's say, from Alondra, at least Alondra to Flower?
Yes, I have, and I've driven it maybe a dozen times during peak hours. And based on traffic engineering standards and policies, there's sufficient progression. That doesn't mean absence of traffic. That just means that the signals there are working as they should, and there is queuing observed, I admit that. And under the policies, it's acceptable.
I'm getting complaints already about the traffic. Can you imagine if we add McDonald's, and you guys are very popular, you're gonna add a lot more cars on the Boulevard, definitely?
Right.
And you're not concerned about the number of cars that will be traversing through Bellflower Boulevard?
Again, it's, the McDonald's would not increase any impacts. It would certainly contribute to any, but it would not change what you're seeing here today.
I, I'm not a traffic engineer, but you say will not increase, I just don't, I just don't get it. Because you guys are very popular, you will add more traffic. You will add more traffic, definitely. Look at, look at the On The Go McDonald's on Woodruff and Artisia. Before it was a Just Tire, there wasn't much cars going to that corner. When it became McDonald's, there's a lot more cars queuing into the drive-thru. So I'm not a traffic engineer, but I can see visually increase in traffic going on that corner, the southwest corner of Woodruff and Artisia. Okay? It used to be a Just Tire store.
Right.
Now it's McDonald's, there's more traffic. All right? Okay, thank you. Another question is, oh, are you Mr. Robert Priest?
Not, I'm Robert Vu.
Oh, okay, okay. Same Robert, same Robert.
Robert Priest is not here this evening.
Okay, another point is, when he says here that the existing condition of Bellflower Boulevard will carry the same points of critical review of any other projects, including proposed residential project. So from my understanding, he's saying that even if, if, let's say, we allow residential into that parcel, it will be the same number of cars traffic generated, correct?
It would be the same traffic conditions they would be encountering. What we considered was a multi-unit residential facility, I believe it was sixty-five to eighty-five units.
Okay, with no parking?
Exactly.
Okay, so how would that compare with the parking? How many parking will you have? Twenty-three parking streets?
Twenty-three spaces.
So you'll have twenty-three cars versus zero car if it's residential?
Yeah, but the residential, it's not saying they won't have cars, it's saying they won't have parking on the lot.
All right.
They, they would have to find a place to park those vehicles.
Because under the new law, they're not required to provide parking in the parcel.
Nor are we.
Okay? No, but, but the assumption there is people will be taking public transportation.
For the residential?
For the residential. That's our state legislature, sir.
Yeah, no, I, we actually had this, we actually had this discussion in private.
The light will be coming from LA to all the way to Artisia, and the residents of that, whatever is built within a half a mile of a trap, of a light rail station, we will take public transportation, so no cars.
It's an interesting thought.
Well, that's not my, that's not the council.
Nor is it mine.
It's coming from Sacramento.
I understood, I was, I was shocked that we were required to have zero spaces. That is a interesting, I've never heard of a restaurant without parking. Again, that's just me.
All right, that's all right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, sir.
All right, and real quick, before we, I, I did want to cut off Councilman Coops, just so that we're clear, and this is on the record, and I know that I'm being recorded, I'm stating that McDonald's does not intend to sue, nor do take any legal matters against the city of Bellflower.
Well, when you write it in the report, it gets my attention, you know?
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, feel free to ask, and I am stating for the record, that McDonald's is a partner to cities, and we do not intend to get in legal battles with a city. We, we actually respect the city of Bellflower quite a bit. Your planning commission has been absolutely fabulous to work with, as has your staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification, that's our standard caveat in every staff report having to do with anything with a quasi-judicial hearing. So to be fair to the, to the appellant, that's from my office, not from his.
He always says, if you got seven hundred fifty dollars, anybody can sue anybody, right?
Well, we will not be writing a check, I will say that.
Yeah, one more?
Yeah, one more, Mr. Stevens.
Oh, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have offered that, huh? I'm just kidding.
Mr. Stevens, one more thing. You mentioned that with the McDonald's On The Go on Woodruff and Artisia, you're looking to, looking at additional, two other places? This one and another place, another location?
Yes.
Okay, so just on the side, why don't you focus on that location instead of this?
Focus on the other location? We are. It actually comes to planning commission next week.
Okay, okay. So if that happens, then we're gonna have five McDonald's in Bellflower?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What's the record the city has McDonald's?
There is a city in California that I believe has seven.
How many square miles?
Yeah, you don't know that one.
I would have to do that off the top of my head.
It just seems like a lot, but just, they're on the borders.
Exactly.
All right, Troy. I got some questions for Robert, the traffic engineer.
Okay.
Other than that, you were, what you've told me was everything that I've heard before. So when you did the parking, or traffic survey analysis, did you take the train station and the parking right into consideration? I didn't hear you say that.
Yes, we did. We assumed they acquired the property to the south of us. We assumed the traffic generated that was utilized in their traffic study, parking, and all that.
Okay. When you said it's within, I know how you, how you said it, because you're, there's rules that you follow being a licensed traffic engineer, and you said the ratings were acceptable. Are those ratings a ABC acceptable, or is it acceptable means minutes longer? There's something there, there's some kind of measurement that you weren't sharing, I don't think.
Right, so the traffic analysis uses the methodology called intersection capacity utilization, and that's how many vehicles can get processed through a traffic signal. And based on that scale...
During its cycle.
During a cycle, it's almost a percentage point, so point nine would be deficient, and then anything below that would be acceptable. And I, the grade would be associated with that percentage, so anything past point nine would be LOS grade EEF.
So you mentioned, you would, you say you mentioned somewhere fifteen times you've been down Bellflower Boulevard during peak hours? You've never had to sit through one signal more than once, one, more than one cycle?
On occasion, there, I have observed that I would have to sit through one or two cycles.
Because I can go down the street at a certain time, and I have to, three different signals will cycle twice. That's three times in the area where McDonald's is. And then you, you didn't mention anything about the concern that when I met with your building staff on site a couple of times, or whatever, my concern was the stacking of left turns with no left turn pocket. My concern was the traffic backing up, waiting to, to get, make a left turn, and I don't know, from where your driveway is, if there's enough, if the lights start stacking, you got traffic coming southbound, and they start stacking up at Floravista at the red light. There goes pretty long, and I don't know if it'll cover the driveway. But if there's traffic, and there's people slowing down for a red light, you can't judge the traffic to make the left turn into a, an egress. And that backs up, and you got everything behind you, and all these poor cars that just missed that, the light on Main, which you, sometimes, most of the time, Main and Oak, you gotta go two cycles to get through those. And now you get to Floravista, and you can't, it's backed up. That's what we're talking about, that's the complaints we're getting. And it's both ways. It's, it's cycling going north, you're setting through signals at traffic time, and, and the going south from Harvard all the way to Oak. Then we, we know when we do the train, that there's gonna be more of a problem. And we actually, Metro, when you went off of the analysis that Metro had for the train coming through, and they graded their train crossing, and you said it was a G, or a, there was a letter grade they give it, I think, and...
C.
A C or something like that, and then I think it has to be a G, and then it, then it gets elevated, because we were pushing for an elevated track to go across Bellflower Boulevard, because we know it's gonna be a problem, we knew this five years ago. They're gonna elevate it at Clark and Floravista already, and so we pushed it, and so we went and got our own analysis. Well, our own analysis, if, I believe it was another grade worse than what Metro did when we did our own analysis. But it doesn't meet the above grade still, that's what they say, because they don't, it's more expensive to go high. That's what we're up against, and we know it's gonna be a problem. So I didn't, do you, as a traffic engineer, what do you think, am I on to something here? Getting a left turn into that McDonald's, gonna be a problem? What do you say?
Ultimately, the project as it stands, it's, they're sticking to the right in, right out.
They're on, during to the, during, on paper, during to that is designed, during to your parameters that the licensed traffic individual has to go by.
So in, in working with staff, I think that was the reason they recommended to have the delineators, was to prevent that turn.
Yeah.
And we actually, as McDonald's, we actually reran our economics based on a right in, right out from that.
So now when the delineators are there, I can just see people making U-turns down at the end of the street at the light that you have to wait two cycles to get through. Or cutting through your neighbor's parking lot that won't, that won't give you a reciprocal agreement.
Yes.
So how many cars a day, say, between, no, say, I'm gonna pick, say, say from noon to six, how many cars are gonna go through that drive-thru?
Between noon and six, I, you will have a highlight of lunch, which will be...
Highlight of what?
At lunch.
Oh, lunch, okay.
Yeah, because actually, if you look at McDonald's business trends, it's a morning lunch, and then it tapers off depending on the product. This one, we anticipate tapering off in the afternoon. At between noon and one, and one and two, it's fifty to sixty, and then it tapers off significantly.
And tapers from there, from, so when, when would you say is the busiest time for that drive-thru?
I'm doing this from memory, so...
Right, yeah, I understand, it's just...
I believe it's in the morning hours between seven and eight.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I didn't see that coming.
So I need to ask the franchisee, she will know these numbers.
Oh, yeah, she sells it.
She'll know these numbers far better than I do.
Wow, I thought busiest time would be like two to six.
Yeah, so it's actually really interesting, because, so, you know, we have two restaurants in Norwalk, two restaurants in Southgate, one in Santa Fe Springs, and one in Bellflower. Yeah, so it's actually really interesting because, so you know, we have two restaurants in Norwalk, two restaurants in Southgate, one in Santa Fe Springs and one in Bellflower and you know, it just encompasses area. Um, so, actually our busiest time is breakfast and we really don't have a lunch or dinner, um, lunch rush or a dinner rush for all the restaurants and, and including Bellflower, the new one as well. So, um, I'm just, if there's, the concern is during the rush hours, you know, during the lunch peak time or the dinner rush, actually, um, it will really not be an issue. We would like actually to have more traffic, believe it or not, but it's really the breakfast and that's for all of the six restaurants that we own over here. It just seems to be a trend over this area, so I don't, that's not a really big concern.
Yeah, like I say, I never saw that coming.
And that's actually a trend, I will say, in California. That, that actually stands true for a number of operators.
Okay.
We have more of a lunch rush more in our, like LA city stores, you know, like Hollywood and West LA. But all the restaurants in this area, um, actually, we are trying to actually get more for lunch and dinner, but, um, so it doesn't really have any, we don't have any backup or anything with traffic.
On an established McDonald's, the size of the one that's proposed, how many cars a day go through there?
So, do you mean for drive-through?
Drive-through, drive-through, yeah, or, yeah, how many cars, you know, drive-through, yeah, drive-through?
Maybe total of like. Yeah, yeah, fifty to four hundred, three fifty to four hundred, that'd probably be pretty accurate.
Basically, what we actually see people doing, it tends not to be a destination.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Point A to point B.
Yeah, so it's mostly people that are already driving, you know, and then they come in, so.
Yeah, and if you, look, it's a, I don't know if you passed. Beyond the go, the, um, the traffic in the morning is far different than lunch. Wasn't a traffic issue. I've had, I always drive by that on the way here just cause.
Troy. So, um, yeah, we, we've noticed that with the traffic, it's much heavier in the morning time than in the afternoon and the evening.
Okay. Thank you, Patty, yeah. So, did, do you, what do you, uh, Robert, what do you think about the traffic backing up and concerns left turn into the McDonald's?
Let me elaborate on that.
Okay.
So that, that's the left turn, turning.
Yeah, so going northbound, cars on, northbound on Bellflower Boulevard wanting to turn left into the McDonald's?
They would have to find a public roadway to turn around or plan their route to find a way to be, head southbound on, on, um, Bellflower if they're going to that McDonald's.
Okay, no, I'm, okay, I, I get that, okay, so I'm, let me, if there was no delineators on the, you know, what was proposed before, if there was, it was this open traffic, this McDonald's, McDonald's was here on Bellflower Boulevard and cars going northbound could make a left turn in it, do you foresee problems?
If there are significant delays, they'll just find another McDonald's or not go to this site altogether. Typically for McDonald's projects like this, they're going for convenience speed and if there's any delay to that, they're just gonna go somewhere else.
Yeah, I just don't, so the, the, the numbers that were just shared is how many cars go through there, that could be, I mean, do you think it's fifty cars an hour would be reasonable to think fifty cars an hour can go into McDonald's?
Uh, under the peak hour, uh, they can certainly support fifty cars.
Within, in a peak hour, fifty cars, okay, so say twenty-five of those are turning right, which kind of is pretty easy, and then twenty-five of those are turning left in an hour. That's a lot of cars backing up and waiting to get traffic. You know, that's like one every, you know, twenty-five, one every two minutes or so, you know? One stops, traffic isn't away, he has to wait like thirty seconds for traffic to clear to turn, that's what I'm, that's the analysis of my, the way my head's wired that I'm kinda thinking.
Right, and we met with city staff to, um, not have that impact for the project and that's.
Yeah, that's why they want the delineators.
Yeah.
The delineators. On weekends, there's so many things that get wrecked from people that are under the influence. Influence nowadays is as it move, I can just see them blowing them all down.
Yeah.
I just, yeah.
Real quick, I was just doing some mental math in my head, which is scary. But if you think about what Patty had mentioned about serving every two minutes, so if you, if you actually, serving someone every two minutes from order to present, that's more of about thirty cars going through there. And if I were going to do the math, I would say it's at best twenty-ten as far as right turn versus left. But that's, that's just how I'm doing it.
Right, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, because I believe that you will have, I, I am one of those drivers that I will not wait a significant amount of time to make that turn.
Yeah, I'm one of those drivers too. I understand that.
And I believe, I hate to say it this way, but I believe the state of California has a number of those drivers that will actually find the more convenient approach. And I believe McDonald's is a destination of convenience and not a destination. That's my opinion.
Okay. And then again, so let's see where Harry, so McDonald's thought it was not worth proposing to, to change anything to, to mitigate. I guess my, cause my, I was one of the concerned that there was, that aired the problem of, you know, no left turn and delineators and I just didn't see it, understand it, but obviously McDonald's has got a good and rough reputation, they can make it on right turns.
We had, by the way, just, we have actually, after the staff proposed the delineators, we went back and ran the economics on single-way traffic.
Yeah.
And it does.
Does work, huh?
But that's why you'll also see us being concerned about additional expenditures.
Right. So I didn't know, I don't, nobody knows what the, the volume of the train is gonna be, they just, it anticipates worst case scenario and, and there will be, you know, there'll be a parking ride next to the train station that's there and, you know, and yes, there should be foot traffic and there should be a lot of bus traffic coming out of there, I imagine the buses will be in there, not alone people, but there ought to be foot traffic coming from there to the McDonald's. And cars at parking ride maybe say, I'm gonna pick up a McDonald's to the family on the way home too.
We, we actually, that's one of the reasons we have made a effort with staff to make it more pedestrian centered. Why we have the outdoor tables, why we have the easier access single point for pedestrians, we took that into it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be possible to hear from others in the audience if they're here to speak on the item?
That would be, yeah, okay. I'll go to that direction there.
Yeah.
Okay. Does Troy? Anyone from your team wanna talk anymore before we hear the, hear from the audience? I'll give you another chance, people another chance to talk. No, you have to have, we gotta record you. You have to come to the podium.
Darlene Palacios, my experience is that when people want to go to McDonald's and they say, Dad, Mom, we're going to McDonald's and you know it's on that side of the street, then you know you have to circle around to make a right turn. Cause I know when there's a restaurant I wanna go to and it's, I remember in Long Beach, I say, we have to circle around to get to that restaurant, so you just learn to circle around. I think that people here will learn to circle around. I don't know if it'll help or not.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, I, I acknowledged it, that's even worse.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name's Cheryl Williams, as you know, but I just wanna comment on a few, couple of things. First of all, you keep referring to the, the new light rail that's coming, it's ten years away still, at least. You know, so a lot of things can change in that length of time and I'm, I'm not saying pro or con approve this McDonald's, but it's just, you know, that's something to worry about in the future, it's not like it's gonna be here. And secondly, and I don't think I'm the only one in the city that feels this way, that a lot of the traffic problem on Bellflower Boulevard is because the timing is not right. Those signals, I do everything I can do honestly to avoid coming down that one stretch of Bellflower Boulevard because you get past one light and then you get to the next one that's red and yeah, and then all the traffic and then it, it just drives me crazy. And, and I think if we could get that working better, the, the traffic would flow a little better. And should I sign my name?
Please.
Sure.
I'm not saying yes or no, you should approve them or not approve them, but it's just a couple of things that were.
We always like other viewpoints, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sophia Partita. Um, I just wanted to come and share as a citizen, again, I mean, I'm sure y'all are looking at the pros and cons and thinking about this. Um, I guess as a citizen, something I would wanna ask of this project, if it does get approved, is like, maybe some sort of either aesthetic or like physical benefit for, um, Bellflower citizens, like maybe a playground for the children, if it fits, obviously, and I know that gets into logistical issues. Or maybe like aesthetically, like if it was more aligned with downtown Bellflower's kind of like retro style, if it wasn't this like modern building, maybe if it was a bit, you know, kind of like the Downey McDonald's, but that's, you know, if it has to get approved or if that ends up being the case, um, but yeah, that's all I wanted to share.
All right. Good idea, Sophia, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, anybody else?
Evening, counselor, council. I'm Dennis Klein. I work at Taylor's Lock &amp; Key. We are adjacent to the project you guys are talking about. Those order windows are gonna be facing our, our side of our building directly, the door that opens out into the parking lot that exists right now. Parking for our customers and ourselves and our two business, two businesses that are part of our building, they have no parking. We are not allowed more than an hour's use of that parking lot by the current owner of that property. He has posted signs and it, this egress and going in and out of where you're talking about, and we're trying to figure out how we're supposed to get our customers in there and use our business before our business gets absorbed. So, my boss and myself have been talking, why aren't we thinking about Floravista Boulevard, or the street Floravista Street, coming straight across into that project? Why isn't that possible? That would eliminate.
It costs money.
Your parking, yeah, but it would eliminate your parking issue.
Yeah, it's not us, it's where.
The turning issue in the street would be eliminated, the delineators wouldn't have to be there. And there's, you're, they're speaking about making all this side of the street red zone. Well, right now, if you go out there, it's parking from the railroad tracks, basically, as far up as they can get to, all the way past Aldi to Alonard Boulevard, as far as they can park, and that's on this side where this building will be. And also on the other side where you've got the, uh, Acapulco Apartments, the trailer park, and then right up to Smart and Final. That's all parking that's being utilized by the apartment complex mostly and the adjacent hous- housing that's along Aldi. I just, I don't understand how this is gonna work without cooperation from Aldi or the use of Floravista as a way to get around the traffic issue. With the lighting setup, I can see you guys having your left turns and your right turns going in and out, no delivery troubles with vans and trucks. It seems like a real answer.
Yeah, all we can talk about is what's presented to us, the property, you're the next door neighbor, your, your property is your property, you can do what you want with it, but.
Well, we're right, we're, we're open, exposed to that parking lot right now. So, it's like, okay, when, during the construction and demolition of Brother's building, we're gonna have to still have.
Well, they don't have, whoever owns that property has the rights to that property, don't have to do anything.
Right to what property though? Are we talking about Brother's property?
Yeah, Brother's property, yeah.
Well, they're.
Your property is your property. If you don't have access after McDonald's is there, that's just the way it is.
So you're gonna close us off?
We're not gonna.
McDonald's is.
It's property rights.
Then they better find out where the borders are, because there's no way.
Well, I'm sure they'll survey the property. Or you could survey your own property, you know?
Doesn't sound right. Especially getting the dumpsters out for trash days and parking the way it is right now. That used to be the public library, or the post office, city post office.
Yeah.
Anyway. I just thought I'd bring it up because nobody's talking about it.
Yeah, but McDonald's is actually, they choose not to do anything else other than develop that property right now, that's all as of for us. We don't have any control other than.
They're not looking at the adjacent property issue though. There is no personal par- parking for those two, those three businesses right there in that building.
Yeah, it's.
They took it all away when they sold the whole rights to that whole property.
You've had gratis for a long time.
Yeah.
You know, but.
Um, I wasn't there.
Yeah.
Only a year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the public? Okay. All right, Troy, come on up, okay.
Thank you again, sir. Uh, a couple of notes just from hearing everyone speak. We would be willing to modify the elevations to include some type of tower element if deemed necessary to fit in with the architectural type as required. Uh, when we talked about the left turn lane, I just wanted to bring up, because I know you have our letter regarding the economic condition. It wasn't just the area in front of McDonald's, it was the entire length of Bellflower for quite some area and that's what made it cost prohibitive. I mean, it was significant as you might, might imagine. And, um, we believe we're a viable option for this property and we appreciate your consideration.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mayor Pro Tem Sunny Santinez, second by Councilmember Coops, without objection, that'll be the order. You got any thoughts or you thinking too?
I'm thinking, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm thinking of a couple of things, right, the queuing, the left turn, you've, you've brought that up and I think that's always been a concern, we talked about that at the last meeting. And quite frankly, I, I, as it is, I'm not ready to support it. I think that I'd have to see what it would look like to have a more, I think we have a, we have a very, um, we have concerns about traffic, we've got concerns about, um, that left turn in, which we know would happen regardless. I think the delineators would go up and I think they'd be down in three months, four months. With regards to, I, I, I do wanna acknowledge though that they are taking efforts into making it more pedestrian friendly uh, with, with the landscape and with the outdoor dining and things of that nature. The, the one thing that I'm just not wrapping myself around with at this point, and I like his comments, um, the comments about the willingness to change or modify elevations, I'd wanna see what that would look like to match that area. I know that McDonald's and other chains do tend to find ways to fit in where they're not so big with the big, you know, signage everywhere and they're a little bit more discreet. I would wanna see it first. I would want to see it first. Then, before making a decision to support or even deny, to be honest with you, but that's, that's where I'm coming from. Um, just not sure that it is the best use of the area. Now, look, we've always, we've always been willing to wait things out a little bit, so I'm not necessarily in a rush, but that's where I'm at. I, I, I hope that makes sense. Yeah.
It does. Good concerns.
There's, sir, you know, McDonald's is a great corporation to have involved in your town. There's no getting around it. And, uh, the volume of business they expect to do there will certainly enhance the city. It's hard for me to explain what's going to happen on the traffic on the Boulevard when the light rail comes through, when it's like Cheryl brought forward 10 years from now, or based on how the funding is going to be coming from the Trump administration to do it, whether the funding ever arrives. So, in my view, I'm going to vote for it. And, uh, and there's the reasons why. Your turn.
Oh. I, I, I thought you were giving the reasons.
I did.
Uh, I, I, I cannot overemphasize my love of McDonald's. It is a it's a very good business. Um, having worked in Illinois where McDonald's started, uh, no.
Started in San Bernardino.
It's based, it's based in Illinois, right? Of course, okay. And I love the operator. I love Patty Young. She's a great operator. She has proven herself, especially with the on the go McDonald's. Um, my, my, the, my problem here is location. It's down to location. The traffic it will create. I know that Cheryl mentioned about 10 years from now, but we cannot discount, we cannot just plan for next year. We cannot just plan for two years from now. We have, we need to plan for the future, long-term planning. So we cannot just, well, the dice is hoping that, well, the light rail will not bring traffic. I, I'm not, I'm an eternal optimist, but I want to play, I want to plan for the worst-case scenario. And I can see with the traffic right now in, on Bellflower Boulevard, it's, it's bad already. It's good for business, okay? But in terms of the queuing, the waiting time, the traffic signals, and I've kept emphasizing to my friends coming to Bellflower, to the city of Bellflower, if you are, if you're trying to use Bellflower as a pass-through street, don't use it. Use Woodrow, use Clark, use Lakewood. Downtown Bellflower was designed to be downtown. There's going to be traffic light. And by design, we want you to see the businesses in Bellflower. We want you to stop and eat and things like that. So having said that, with the new McDonald's being proposed here, it will add more traffic into the city. I, I want McDonald's to succeed, and don't get me wrong. And as I mentioned earlier, we already have three McDonald's and I'd like to have the fourth McDonald's. But it is the location, location, location that prevents me from saying a yes for this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, one more question for staff real quick. Uh, Ms. Ova or staff? What's the, uh, the queuing, how many cars can be queued in, in the, in the drive-thru? I cannot find any report.
The queue is designed for 10 vehicles.
10 vehicles.
Um, but then in addition to that, because the drive-through entrance is at the back of the property, um, any additional cars that would be queued, because the queuing analysis did show up to 13 vehicles at peak times uh, at similar locations, um, any additional vehicles would remain on-site because the driveway is so far back.
Kind of like in and out. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to adopt Resolution 25-15, a resolution denying an appeal, AP 25-01, and upholding the Planning Commission Resolution Number 25, 24-15, denying development review, DR 3243-24-15169, and conditional use permit, CU-24-07, for the construction of a 3,786 square foot restaurant with a drive-through component located at 16211 Bellflower Boulevard.
Dan, would you like to make a subsequent motion?
Yeah, I'd like to
Well, hold on, but you heard my conditions.
So you're willing to wait with the vote if you can see a, uh, how the exterior will be developed? Does that sound right?
And, and a plan for some kind of, uh, continued responsibility on that, on the, it's, on the, uh, on the median thing? Oh my God, I hate being sick. Um, on the
Delineators.
Delineators. Somehow that becomes their responsibility. I don't know if we could do that or not, and I'll look at the city attorney for that. But I would like to see it first. I would, I would be willing to wait if the applicant is willing to wait. I'm not ready
Okay, I sense that you're ready to vote no. So if you are still on the fence as to whether or not you're going to vote for or against
I would, well, I'll be honest, I would vote no right now, as is. I would, I would vote no.
Well, then we're going to have a, if I vote again, with this, if you vote no, we got 3-1.
Right.
If, uh, you go with me, they still lose because it's 2-2.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So what do we gain?
I would add this, the applicant has expressed to us, um, there might be a timing issue with that as far as their project timing and things go. They've also expressed to us via email, um, that they simply financially weren't willing to
Oh, that's true.
make any of those accommodations.
Okay.
All right, so there's no use in making a substitute motion?
There's no, there's no
I'll second the Sunny's motion. So we got a motion on the floor of a mayor pro tem, and a second by the mayor. Call roll.
Mr. City Attorney, can you clarify what an I vote means and what a no vote means?
The I vote means that the appeal is denied and the decision of the Planning Commission is upheld. I should note for the record that a tie vote results in the same.
Okay.
Call roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
No.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
What do we got left here? Yeah, we can take a break.
9:15, you want a break?
No.
Just take a break. Health break.
All right, we're going to take a health break for 10 minutes.
We have happy meals in the lobby.
Yeah, yeah.
Or kids' meals.
Right, that's thoughtful thinking.
That sounds very funny.
It's getting cooler in here, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, that, that door especially. It was getting really bad.
Oh, they got that door open now?
Yeah.
Oh, good idea.
Let him open that door and he opened both of those.
Oh, that helps. Yeah, it is getting cooler now, you said it.
I was sitting out there watching it through the glass for a while because I couldn't take it in here.
No, I think we've got flow-through ventilation here.
Am I too late to speak?
No, you spoke last time, remember? We put you on restriction.
All right, I didn't know.
I'll see you next time, yeah. By the way, I couldn't make it to the meeting earlier. Thank you. Good night, Wendy.
Are you leaving that?
I've had enough fun.
Oh, okay.
My, my, my heart, my heart couldn't take it. Well, no, we have to be there. I know.
Congratulations. You got all the changes approved.
Is he like danger-wise or? I'm just saying. Nutty guy? Just saying, pay attention. You gotta give him more of this guy. My, 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 put my people in somewhere we shouldn't be.
Yeah, I tried. And I'm going to say that at the next meeting.
Back to the little red flag on the That thing's been sitting there for seven weeks.
I know.
I don't know if that's in a row. So my question to you is Should have been taught that, absolutely.
Right, yeah, I love to just speak in person.
Usually, this has been all the way through there, especially for Why are they not bringing that? Because again, they don't deal with wholesome yesterday, if you fall asleep or if you keep falling. Can't he just make another day? I mean, I could write in front of my listeners, March 3rd, calling a cashier submission for the weekend. Or excuse me, last week. I have to see the tickets on the other week and I just Either way.
Oh, no.
Or, or we go early, early morning, like before the sun's up.
I, I, I Really? Oh, my God. He's a nephew, one of your friends. Yeah, Chico, he lives in, he lives in Los Angeles and that area, you know? And Chico is never a very common name, yeah, yeah. And it's a big family. There's, they, they always, on Sundays, they go to lunch together. Okay.
And everybody's texting me about the heat. But only one's going to get the response along, so you gotta be kind to everybody else. No rookie, first-year B C M gets to try Especially one that weighs 105 pounds. Try being 325. He's still out with all the resident students.
Let the record show that the council has reconvened from their health break. At, what time is it? 9:30. Okay. Uh, Mr. Smoot, you want to introduce item 13A?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're passing on?
What's that?
We're passing on to Rolita.
Yeah, had to catch up there. Uh, this is another item that's been continued for two particular parts of the ordinances. You adopted, um, two new ordinances and two urgency ordinances coming back for you for those amendments. I'll let Beth and Roe take it from there.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. For your consideration tonight are two urgency ordinances and two regular ordinances related to the accessory dwelling units. Essentially, there are two ordinances being proposed, one governing the size and the other governing the number of ADUs. The urgency ordinances are secured by the regular ordinances. Um, the urgency ordinances will take effect immediately and the regular ordinances would take effect 30 days after the second reading. On April 14, 2025, the City Council held a public hearing amending Bellflower Municipal Code Title 17 through ordinance number 1443. And this, the amendments included And this, the amendments included the accessory dwelling unit chapter. And during that meeting, the City Council requested additional information pertaining to the maximum size of the ADUs as well as the maximum number of ADUs that would be permitted on the lot. On April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the City Council provided direction to draft ordinances for consideration amending those recently adopted regulations, which will take effect on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. The first point of discussion for tonight is the ADU size, which is reflected in ordinance number fourteen forty-four and fourteen forty-six. Essentially, what's being proposed is a maximum of twelve hundred square feet. This would be a status quo prior to the effective date of ordinance number fourteen forty-three. The second point of discussion is a maximum number of ADUs, which is reflected in ordinance, ordinance numbers fourteen forty-five and fourteen forty-seven. This provides a flexibility by allowing the combination of multiple ADUs within the existing multifamily dwelling units that are not used as livable space, as well as allowing for detached ADUs. For a project to qualify under the combination scenario, it must satisfy all development standards in the underlying zone. And the proposed provisions are reflected on page two of the staff report, as well as in the ordinances before you. Staff's recommendation to the City Council is to adopt urgency ordinance numbers fourteen forty-four and fourteen forty-five by at least a four-fifth vote to take effect immediately. Read by title only, wait for the reading and introduce ordinance numbers fourteen forty-six and fourteen forty-seven, with the second reading and possible adoption occurring on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Or alternatively, discuss the take and take other action related to this item. This concludes staff's presentation. Am I, is there any questions?
Oh, good report. Victor, you got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Kinda you're a baby.
Thank you. On the, on the first item, no, I understand what we're doing there. We're, we're bringing back the maximum allowable square, square feet. So that, that makes total sense for me. I do want to massage a little bit the second item, which is the multifamily dwelling. More specifically.
You didn't get what you wanted.
No. No, no, more specifically, I want clarity and then I would like to work on just massaging this language a little bit, specifically on the development standards. You know, I think our concerns, our major concerns are parking when it comes to, you know, ADUs and, or additional units being built on a, on a lot. So I wanna make sure that we are a little bit more prescriptive in what we are looking for. Because if we talk about all development standards, it may be difficult. So the flexibility may not be there. So we're, there really isn't much of a, of a change in this ordinance that would allow for, for both the ADUs or the conversion to happen, sorry, the new structure or the conversion to happen i- if we're applying all development standards in, in, in a project, in a construction project. So I just wanna work on that and see if we can focus in on a little bit more on the development standards. So staff, can you kinda tell us what you mean by development standards?
As currently proposed, it would actually be applicable to all fifteen development standards in a typical R-two, R-three lots. There are about fifteen and only about four would actually be affecting or applied to existing conditions. Specifically, those would be the usable open space, the off-street parking, lighting and refuse storage, which already is covered in the non-conforming chapter, if we look at it as a, if it's a primary unit. Those are already covered as far as being required to be put to current code.
So those are the four that would apply or would not apply?
So all would apply, four of which would actually affect the existing conditions.
And would those conditions be applied to the conversion or to the entire lot?
So for usable open space, that would actually apply to the entire lot. As well as the off-street parking, that would be applied to all the units.
What's the standard with off, off-street, oh, off-street parking, duh, on, on the lot? I get it.
So.
What is the requirement there?
We did change it as part of ordinance number fourteen forty-three, so we do have a reduced parking. As we speak right now, because ordinance number fourteen forty-three is not currently in effect. Right now, it would have been a two-car garage, additional parking for a bedroom and then a guest parking space. But that has been reduced as part of ordinance number fourteen forty-three.
Okay, and that would be, so that would be four parking spots, is what I'm hearing? Is that per unit?
So the so for the, the ordinance is gonna take effect in May twenty-eighth. We actually just reduced it by no longer requiring the additional parking spaces for every bedroom that is in addition, or every bedroom after the first two.
Okay, so every bed, so you have two per unit and then one per additional bedroom? If, if a unit is two bedrooms?
Councilmember sanctions, it is a two-car garage, so two parking spaces per unit, plus one guest parking space per unit.
Got it.
So it'd be a total of three bed, oh, sorry.
Three units.
Three parking spaces per unit.
Okay, so would that apply, let's say you have a project in which you did the detached ADUs first, right? Okay, you do that scenario and then you come back and apply to do the conversion. Do all the standards apply to even the previously approved ADUs?
As currently written in this ordinance, it would apply to the existing units plus the ADUs that are being added or converted.
Yeah, see, that's my concern.
If you wanted it just to be for the added ADUs, then we would have to amend the language that's being presented.
Yeah, because the idea was, for lack of a better phrase, is we're gonna put the carrot out. Is if you want to do this additional unit, you can do it, but if you provide parking for that unit, that was my, kinda more of my intent, to allow for the flexibility. Because if you try to apply all development standards for the entire lot, it kinda defeats the purpose. It will be almost nearly impossible.
Well, I mean, there's nothing requiring someone to do the conversion in the first place. This is, this is to say, hey, if you, if you want to add that unit and you have the space to do that and you're able to meet these development standards that the city's established, knowing that for the ADUs in the first place, the state may have exemptions to those which, which we can disagree or agree, not particularly relevant. If you're able to meet those development standards, we'll allow you to do this additional unit that you can then make the revenue or have family live in, whatever you choose.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I, and I agree with that and I think that it should be applicable to the but I, the one thing I disagree with, disagree with is that it should be applicable to the development being proposed, not previous development, if that makes sense. That's my one. Carl, am I, am I confusing you?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, so my one caveat on that is if it, the property, for example, is a non-conforming property and you're simply adding an ADU, what you're suggesting is now we're gonna apply new development standards that have been adopted after the non-conforming development was already approved to the new development. So with this language, we can still apply the non-conforming standards. What I hear you saying is if in nineteen seventy, I, I built my home according to the standards in nineteen seventy, now all I'm doing is adding on an ADU based upon what I just understood you to say, now I'm going to apply the twenty twenty-five standards to the entire property based upon my desire to have an ADU on the property, which seems to defeat both your intent and the legislature's intent.
Right, well, that's my point, that that is, isn't it the way that it's being presented this evening? It has been presented in that manner, that it's essentially, if you built in nineteen fifty, right, and now you're coming back and adding an additional unit and you're having to put everything to the current standards, it's gonna be very difficult. For example, I'll speak to my, you know, my home. My garage is attached to my neighbor's garage. If I wanted to per se, and I'm not doing this, convert that garage into an ADU or junior ADU, this, under this, under this code, I would not be able to do that because that condition, that ADU or that garage would not meet the code, it does not have a five-foot setback.
So I would disagree with that assessment from the standpoint which it says development standards applicable in the underlying zone in which the property is located. Meaning that, that gives you, gives the city planner additional flexibility to make the determination of which development standards applies to that particular property based upon its construction date. Otherwise, yes, if it said current development standards, I agree with you. But that's not what it says.
So it's not saying, cuz that's not how it was explained to me when I asked the questions about it, but, okay.
So let me hopefully provide some clarification. So in our, sorry, in our non-conforming ordinance, it allows for certain improvements to be done on an existing site without having to comply with setbacks, lot coverage and those things. For example, you can add a certain amount of square footage. However, there is a specific section that says if you're non-conforming in terms of parking, meaning you don't even have enough parking for your unit that exists. If you add an additional unit, it requires parking to be compliant for the existing unit that's non-conforming.
For the existing non-conforming unit and the new.
Plus the new.
Okay, but it's just on parking.
Correct.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
That's.
All right, that's fine, that's fine. But that's what I meant by clarity on all development standards. When I hear all development standards, I think of everything, right? It's the setbacks, it's the, it's the, what's it called? I don't know, fire safety, it's all, all building and safety requirements. Which obviously that would still have to happen, I hear you, Carl. But you know what I mean?
I, I, just so that we're clear that, one, I don't know that this needs interpretation because the, again, I go back to the wording of applicable.
Director's discretion.
In the underlying zone and if there's a determine, or a inconsistency, there's already existing language within the municipal code that allows there to be a director's determination to clean up any ambiguity. But I, I, my opinion is that the language meets what you're trying to accomplish while still giving flexibility to the planner to help facilitate ADUs as opposed to not.
All right, well, if it applies to parking, that's great. All right.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Ro, what's going on?
Rowan is clarifying that the way that the non-conforming code reads is that usable open space, off-street parking, lighting and refuse storage, which is basically a trash enclosure, are all applicable if you propose new units and applicable to the existing units. The other standards as it relates to building separation, setbacks, those all can stay, those can all remain. Building bulk, those can remain. It's the usable open space, which is the amount of landscaping on the property.
Is that front, front, front setting? It's your front set, your front setback mainly?
Yeah, essentially like yard areas, usable open space.
Yard areas per unit or a, like a congregate area?
Per unit.
Is that your determination or is that?
That's currently written in the code.
In this new one or the, in the existing?
Existing code.
So it does not just apply to parking, is what you're saying?
Correct.
It'd be those four of all the fifteen development standards, those four would be applicable to the whole project. The rest of them would not. Am I saying that correctly?
Correct.
And this is only for R-twos, right? R-threes, I mean? R-twos and R-threes?
It's, it applies to both R-two and R-three lots, where typically multifamily dwellings would be proposed. So those are the only, those four development standards out of fifteen existing development standards, those are the only ones that will actually affect existing conditions. All other conditions, all other development stars would still apply, but if it's already existing, it's basically protected.
That was open space, parking, lighting.
Lighting.
But lighting, that's your typical lighting that would be on every, every unit.
Unit.
Every door entrance. And then trash, trash enclosure. All seems fair. Go ahead, I'm okay for now.
That's when I was still single, no responsibilities. Correct. It will not base on the revision that we presented as part of ordinance number fourteen forty-three. That is correct if we compare it based on the twenty-five, on the code back in early two thousands. The current standard is actually already at two per unit plus additional parking space for every bedroom after the first two. So the difference really is. Yes, sir. Correct.
You good?
No, no, not yet.
Not yet, okay, keep going.
Thank you. So to be clear, what we approved at the last meeting, right, what we adopted at the last meeting was, it was, we went from an and, from you can build new units and convert to or. So we can no longer do both, right?
Correct.
Okay, when we did that, we did not apply any form of parking requirement.
And that is correct and that would still be applicable today. The only reason why the development standards would be applicable is if, if a property owner decides to do both. But if you, if a, if a developer chooses to just do either conversion, a conversion, then we would just revert back to.
What we approved at the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, this is just a basically a third option.
This is a third option.
The idea here is incentivizing.
It's incentivizing.
If you can meet those standards, we're, we'd, we'd love for you to be able to build that additional unit, that's the idea.
Yeah. I, I just feel like three parking spots for an eight hundred ADUs a little too much. You know? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Right, no.
Call a mother-in-law flat or something.
A mother-in-law or something, but they just use the regular garage and put another unit behind.
Yeah. And to be clear, we can modify this, right? I mean, that's what we're here for, so I, I mean, yeah, three spots just seems, it does not, it seems aggressive. It did for, for eight hundred square feet, you know?
About twelve hundred square feet.
Or for, well, for twelve hundred square feet, I guess that's a whole different.
Cause we are going to twelve hundred square.
But the ADU, what, what kinda house is in front of it? What's the primary residence?
Right, right, well, depends.
Now, does that take, you took away the parking from there, you bulldoze that garage to put the ADU in? Then three's not, or three, three, three parking spaces is not a lot for two houses.
But it's, the thing is that it's three spots for one unit.
Oh.
So now it's six units or six lot, six parking spots.
But you didn't, you just lose the, you know, you have the possibility to lose two and put three back in as a way to, you know, say, yeah, you know?
The scenario we're talking about is someone has added ADUs already with, you know, under our, the standards allowed by the state. And we're incentivizing if they wanna do that additional unit, meet the standards or don't, if you choose not to. But you, you can still add the units that the state allows you to add. And if, if you can meet those development standards and provide for it, yeah. And if if you can meet those development standards and provide for it, yeah, you'd have to have.
So I agree with adding the number of lots, or sorry, the number of units, for example, what I mean is I agree with adding the number of parking spot required, but I don't think that it needs to be three, four, one unit. So for example, if you've already built two, like the ADU, right, for example, you've already built the ADU, you took away your garage.
Right.
Or now you come in and you take away your garage.
No parking.
So now you have no parking, so I could see if you do the third unit, the conversion.
And then you put three back.
And then you do, put three parking, at least it's one parking per unit.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's what I can agree with that, but three per unit, that would mean you would need nine.
If it's per unit, it's what it is, but yeah, the whole property can share them, so it's.
Right. But but that's not the way that it's, I'm I'm interpreting it as.
Well, it's gonna be, but it's one piece of property only, one person owns it and you rent them out, that's the rule.
And part of the impetus behind this, let's go back a couple of meetings and the last meeting, was discussion about the lack of parking required for some of these additional units that were being uh uh that are allowed to build under state laws. And some of the complaints we received from residents regarding a lack of parking for some of the new additional units that are being allowed under state laws. Um so the discussion you had at your last meeting was, hey, if we're going to, if if somebody can meet those standards in our usual development standards, shouldn't we allow them then to do that additional unit? That's where this came from, was a, to say, hey, we've adopted this new thing recently, maybe we need to tweak it a little bit, a little bit, put some flexibility if someone can meet those standards, that's how we got to this ordinance.
Yeah, no, and I don't disagree and I appreciate you guys bringing this back and the way you're bringing it back, I appreciate that. I'm just having a conversation about the number. What is our current parking requirement for like a a a development like the Edgeway? What is the per per unit parking requirement? Or like, right, right, no, I know, or or like uh the condos or anything like that, just a little bit more.
So the Edgeway is a little bit different because they had a development agreement and were able to transfer some parking. But essentially, they were parked at one point five spaces per unit and how that ended up getting calculated was they really parked it at one parking space per bedroom. So if it was a studio or a one-bedroom unit, it was one parking space, if it was a two-bedroom unit, it would be two parking spaces.
Three bedroom was three.
Mm-hmm, and but overall, it ended up being a ratio of one point five parking spaces per unit.
So let's say the conversion is a five hundred or under five hundred square feet, right? So we're playing with numbers, so would that change the three, and it's not three, it's not two bedrooms or it's, it's just a studio or does that change, would that change the requirement here in the parking?
As currently proposed, no.
Okay, so so at the last meeting, I mentioned, you know, scalability, right, between a small project and as you get bigger, the the requirements should be greater. Cuz if it's five hundred square feet, you don't need three, three spots, you know, you don't need three parking spots. Right, yeah, exactly. So so I guess my question is, can we play with this a little bit? And can we, I mean, one point five per unit, I think that that's actually not bad, that's not a bad idea, one point five, I think that's fair, I think it's manageable.
Mi- Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we would, what I'm hearing is we're talking about parking standards now.
Yes.
That's not on the agenda, so if you wanna talk about.
Well, it's development standard though.
Parking is one element of of the development standards, but we don't have the tables of the parking standards, we don't know because we haven't done any review of how, what happens if we squeeze the toothpaste one way, what happens on the other end with regard to the parking. So if this is something that the council would like to discuss, then I encourage you to give that direction and we'll come back with at the parking standards that you can play around with.
Fair enough, so then this is what I'll do, unless my colleagues have any other questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an urgency ordinance number one four four amending Bellflower Municipal Chapter Code seventeen accessory dwelling governing maximum allowable square footage. And bring back urgency ordinance number one four five and urgency ordinance amending Bellflower Municipal Code Chapter seventeen accessory dwelling units governing the number of allowable accessory dwelling units at a later date with specific um studies on parking options and the recommended standard of approvals that were mentioned this evening. So I'm approving one and pushing back one.
Councilmember Sanchez, if I can just clarify one thing.
Yes.
You can do that, however, the changes won't be in effect prior to the effective date of the original ordinances. So the reason why we back, brought back these ordinances as an urgency ordinance is so that they would take effect par to the adoption date of the original ordinances that we proposed. So come March twenty-eighth, the maximum size per unit would be eight hundred square feet.
No, no, I think what Councilmember Sanchez is suggesting is adopt the the urgency ordinance and regular ordinance associated with the size of the ADUs and table the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance associated with the conversions.
Correct.
Which means that um the twenty-eighth, when that takes effect, the size one would be twelve hundred. Because this urgency ordinance will have taken effect, the conversions would revert back to what was adopted under fourteen forty-three at the last meeting.
Correct, so there will be a slight gap.
That's okay, I mean, we have to study it, I think the the city attorney is making that very clear that this is not a conversation we can get into too deeply into, but.
Well, and and just to be clear, I mean, there's no reason that we can't bring back another urgency ordinance, which will take effect immediately. With regard to the, with regard to the parking specifically, but that simply means that before that gets codified, you'd be already amending that ordinance. So I I I think, I think we should concentrate, or respectfully, you should concentrate on what you would like to have come back. We'll figure out the procedure for making that happen as quickly as possible.
Mayor, of clarification, isn't the standard right now, uh the ordinance allowed is twenty-five, twelve hundred square feet at this time, that's the status quo?
Without the urgency, it's eight hundred square feet.
Well, hold on, hold on, we have a couple of things happening. So you have adopted an ordinance at your last meeting that takes effect thirty days after its adoption on second reading, that would be the twenty-eighth of this month, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so what, if you adopted the urgency ordinance and regular ordinance associated with the size of the ADUs here tonight, that would take effect immediately. Effectively, what would happen is that ordinance you adopted previously would be superseded by this one. So you'd be, the the allowable square footage of an ADU would be twelve hundred square feet.
Never changes.
If you don't, if you don't adopt the the urgency ordinance tonight.
If you do adopt that urgency ordinance associated with that one, the.
If we don't, if there's no action tonight.
You have two ordn- two urgency ordinances and two.
There's no action tonight, if there's no action tonight, what's the size allowable for ADUs?
Eight fifty.
Eight hundred.
Or eight hundred, sorry.
As of May, May twenty eighth.
May twenty eighth.
As of today.
It's twelve hundred.
It's your existing code at twelve hundred.
Because the fourteen forty-three has not yet taken effect, so that change has not occurred within.
Because we had the first reading.
Correct.
So we're cleaning that up. Thank you. Is it messy?
No, we just, you approve one and push one down the road, yeah.
To to clarify the motion, if I can, for the city clerk, the motion is uh to adopt the urgency ordinance uh number fourteen forty-four and regular ordinance fourteen forty-six and on first reading and table urgency ordinance fourteen forty-five and table regular ordinance fourteen forty-seven.
Right, with direction as to the latter to bring it back for the next.
Bring it back and to give us further information on those four items that were that were discussed as development standards. Essentially, help us, educate us, help us be a little bit more prepared on.
We got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez and a second by Councilmember Coops, call roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Sensinus?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Alright, consent calendar, guys. Does anyone have any conflicts? No conflicts, okay, that's easy, are there any items that wanna be pulled for further discussion? Not seeing any, thought it entertain a motion from somebody.
Move to the consent calendar.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Coops for the consent calendar and a second by Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. Councilmember reports, Mr. Sanchez, you want, you got anything?
Uh yes, um thank you, Mr. Mayor, um great meeting today and then um also Saturday was a great event by the L.A. County Fire Museum, um which was well-attended by by us. Uh it was a great event, they they had a good attendance, even though it was really hot. Um and I'll let the uh rest of my colleagues speak to the event a little bit more, but uh that was it.
Councilmember Mayor Protim.
Leading to report, mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Coops?
Uh to follow up on what Victor said, we went to the uh yearly anniversary of the L.A. Fire, L.A. County Fire Department. And they held it at the museum here in Bellflower and it was well-attended, they had to fly over by their helicopter, which is always exciting. A lot of equipment in the street, a lot of presentations made, um they were very grateful. The members of the Board of Directors, very appreciative of our city council for all the work we've done to try to provide them a place to have their museum and it was a great event and as indicated by Councilmember Sanchez, it was rather warm, but what do you, what do you care? It's just a part of the program, but great event and uh I guess that's all I have to report.
Did you get to see the fire chief?
No.
The fire chief was absent from this one.
No, but uh there was other people there with brass on.
Okay. Councilmember Morse?
I I also enjoyed myself on Saturday and I'll um just leave it at that, I had a great time.
My council um colleague Morse, was it as hot as it is hot in here? I don't know.
No, I think it's hotter in here.
I agree.
Especially with our jackets on, which uh I'm hoping we don't have to wear next meeting.
Which the mayor says that after Memorial Day.
So I wanna make an announcement here. Drum roll, please. So uh we're gonna go our council shirts and uh we're gonna lose our shoes, our suits for the rest of the summer.
Yeah, not a shirt, suits.
No, we're gonna go.
Till Labor Day.
From Memorial Day, all the way to mid-October.
That only applies to us, but not the city attorney and the city manager, right?
We want them to look good on the camera, yeah.
We get shorts and flip flops, right?
He's looking for an Indian summer.
No, we went that with you because it was so hot.
It was so hot, it was Indian summer.
It was, yeah, Labor Day is always, but then then what happens is two more weeks.
Predicting Farmer's Almanac now.
After Halloween.
Probably at the end of December, we'll see how the weather pattern is.
I left that open, yeah.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I tossed my paper and everything in there like I was done. Yeah, a lot of water, two bottles today.